I'd like to call, whoa, to order the July 13th School Board Meeting. Motion, Approval of Agenda. Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up as well. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, yes, we have an amendment. I apologize. Anyone have their agenda up? I will have it up.
Okay, I have it up.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Carol Kadu Blackwood. I move we amend and approve the agenda for the July 13th, 2020 Board Meeting to include the updated personnel report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate your patience. I'm glad this is, I only have five minutes. Oh, so thank you for bearing with me. Yes, at this time, we have a special recognition with Dr. Lewis to speak.
Yes, good evening, Board members and community members that are viewing online. I want to take a moment to thank Board President Melissa Johnson, who is concluding her term as Board President. The Board chose Melissa in 2017 to fill a year-long vacancy after a Board member stepped down midterm. Melissa has successfully ran, well, she did successfully ran for election to a four-year term in 2018. As a mother, an educator, veteran of the United States Marines, Melissa's dedication to service is truly evident, and her passion for this community, her passion for our scholars and our staff is truly evident. We also appreciate her sincere passion for equity and excellence in this school district. And I will just personally say, it's been an esteemed honor to serve alongside you my second year. So, thank you. You were part of the Board that hired me, so I appreciate that as well. But we definitely know that you're not leaving the Board right now. You just stepped in and will continue to be a strong advocate on behalf of our children here in this district. So, as is our tradition, we have purchased a piece of student work to recognize Melissa's leadership. Two of our art teachers recommended that we get in touch with Free State's graduating senior, Corinne Mikulik. So, we did. She was, I guess, a sought-after artist. She has taken graphic design, she's taken photography, and all of the other drawing and painting classes at Free State High School. Her favorite medium is oil painting because she says the paint dries slower, so she can make modifications. I guess as she is getting inspired, as she's finishing her piece, she can make those modifications as she paints. Corinne created this acrylic painting, and I won't tell you what it is. I'll let you open it first, and I'll describe it while you open it. Corinne created this acrylic painting on canvas in Rachel Downs' AP Studio class as part of a series showing the passage of time through fashion. And I know you're a fascinista, Melissa, from the various decades. This piece is appropriately entitled '90s Shoes.' And I know that's around the year you were born as well.
Yes.
So appropriate. It earned Corinne's honorable mention, actually. She received honorable mention in the annual Merriam High School Visual Arts Competition for that piece. Corinne plans to take a gap year next year before entering the University of North Carolina at Asheville to further her study of fine art. So, you may have a very expensive piece, considering the talent of Corinne. So, on behalf of Corinne, who did that piece, Rachel Downs, the AP Studio class, the district, we want to say thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. This is so neat. Actually, a fun story. Was it two years ago? When I went to Japan, I saw these shoes, like shoes similar to these, and it was like the first, first day we went to Tokyo, and I was like, um, these are a hundred bucks, and we have like nine more days. Let me pace myself. I had a strict budget. But, plus, they were a little too tight, but I was gonna try to squeeze them and get away with them. But this is really neat. Thank you, Corinne. Thank you, everyone.
Hope you enjoy that piece as a token of our appreciation for your outstanding Board leadership this past year.
That will go in my fun room in the basement with the glitter floors. So, thank you. I guess, I mean, I can say stuff, but I can wait to Board commentary. But, like Dr. Lewis said, I'm not going anywhere. I have at least two more years on the Board. But even after those two years, I will not stop pushing for students, for scholars, and, you know, doing the equity work that, that I've been doing on the Board. I've been doing it, you know, as an educator, as a mom. So, can't get rid of me that easily. So, now, we are going to move on to the reorganization of the Board with, by electing our President and Vice President. I would just say that working with Kelly has been a breath of fresh air, you know. I'm trying not to get emotional, but we're not going anywhere. But I just really appreciated the collaboration that we did. It wasn't just, yes, I had the title of President, but we worked together and bounced ideas off of each other, corrected each other. So, I just really appreciate that time, and I know you're gonna do a phenomenal job, and Erica as well. And I'm just really looking forward to you all's leadership. And, you know, like I said before, I'm here. I'm not going anywhere. So, as former President, and I'm just, you know, some of the experiences that I've had, good, bad, or indifferent, I want to make sure, you know, that we can correct those to make sure that you have a pleasant experience. I mean, I think overall, the experience was great. It taught me to be a better parent, taught me to be a better educator. And, you know, so I kind of, you know, had a little bit of advantage in my life as a whole. So, I just, I'm just looking forward to it. So, I would like to make the motion. That's okay. I move that the Board of Education elect Kelly Jones as our new President of the Board of Education.
This is GR, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to do single?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Okay. And yay, I get to pass. Pass it on to you. I mean, not, yeah, yeah.
Melissa?
Yes.
This is Shannon. I didn't know if we were doing a roll call, but I intended to vote yes, so.
Oh, yes. Well, I know, that's why, I'm sorry. I kind of got confused. It was like, what is it? Oh, you wanted a roll call. Oh, yes, let's do it. As my last.
All right. Jones?
Uh, yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Smith?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes. Motion passed.
This is seven zero.
Yay.
Thank you.
I wish we could have, but.
I know.
Thank you.
I have Dave Cunningham in the room to help me and two past Presidents as I move forward this evening. So, the next action is recommendation for a Vice President. Do you have a motion?
This is GR. I move that the Board of Education elect Erica Hill as our new Vice President of the Board of Education.
Second.
This is Shannon. I second.
She beat me.
Jones?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
This is seven zero.
Okay. So, next is the report of the President of the Board, and I guess that's me. So, thank you all for giving me this opportunity, and to the voters of Lawrence for giving me this opportunity. It's an interesting moment to step into this role. On the way in, we were greeted by folks rallying to encourage the Board to think about equity and to encourage the Board to be thoughtful about how we open schools in the fall. It's my intention to do that. I'm really grateful I get to do that with you. So, thank you, Erica, for being willing and for your service to Lawrence as well. And I look forward to working with you this year. So, Melissa has offered to support Erica and I in our transition as a past President and to be available to provide us advice and guidance, and we will be taking her up on that. So, I wanted to take a minute just to build a bit on what Dr. Lewis has said related to Melissa, and I'm sure that we all could say a lot of things. If you haven't noticed my great affection for her, you just haven't really paid attention to me for the last two years. So, in addition to some of the things that Dr. Lewis has mentioned, I just want to highlight Melissa's commitment to fairness and to, oh, thank you, GR, and her leadership skills. GR and I, when we had our congratulations celebration for winning the election, at that meeting, we saw Melissa intervene on the behalf of a stranger in a restaurant who she felt wasn't safe. And that's essentially what the next couple of years would come to be. She's not afraid to look out for you if it's needed. And I just want to tell you that in the year that Melissa was President, she read, actually, your convocation speech. I think really brought, set the tone for the year, which I appreciated. You assisted in recruiting and supporting the Board candidates, and we now have this lovely Board. If you had not been a part of that, I don't know that it would look the way that it does. We transitioned three new Board members. We established a value for a partnership with the LEA. You really can't underestimate the power of your being a teacher and being on the Board, and it's been so helpful to us in establishing a really good relationship with the Union, and it's my intention as President to continue that. You've engaged meaningful conversation with the community around the equity policies and equity issues in general. You've made space for voices that maybe didn't have space before. You have, you helped us affirm a gender-affirming policy dress code. You helped us lead conversations around the change of the school start time. You facilitated really challenging conversations with Dr. Lewis around gun safety and what that looks like in our community. You mediated too many parents and student conversations to even recognize, and really just gave voice to, to folks that didn't have it otherwise, and all the while, while a pandemic was happening. So, it's, it's really been an extraordinary year and quite exceptional in a lot of ways. And you helped the Board stay together and be cohesive because you're quite good at leadership. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have the Board in general, I just wanted to let the community know, that we have received a lot of emails from you all. I'm working to respond to as many of them as I can, and I know my colleagues on the Board are as well. But just wanted to acknowledge that we've heard a lot of feedback around support for the, requesting support for the Parry Union. We've heard a lot of feedback from folks related to issues related to equity and supporting initiatives that are reflective of the principles and values of Black Lives Matter. We have also received quite a few emails around making sure that we are entering next fall as safely as we can, and we'll hear about that later this evening. I appreciate all the work that Dr. Lewis and Dr. Stubblefields and others have been doing in all of these areas. I wanted to highlight that on the 27th, we'll be having a work session with the Parris to discuss the Union. We asked that Board members send questions to Elise that they would like to have as part of that work session. So, if you haven't done that, please do. I did reach out to the Parry Union, or actually, they reached out to me. I did ask that they also get in contact us with what they'd like to see happen at that meeting. But hopefully, we have an agenda set so that they know what to expect during the conversation. The agenda might be quite loose, but certainly, you can know what to prepare for. And then, I wanted to tell you all that in terms of the equity policy, I met with the Midwest and Great Plains Equity Center again, and we will meet with them one more time before we bring a draft to you all. It's actually, there's been significant amendments and fine tuning that we just have a little bit further to go before we're ready to bring it to you. But the equity facilitators in the district also helps set a little bit different of a tone for that policy. And then, it will go to, as I've said several months, it'll then go to our advisory councils within the district. So, that's where that's at. But I'm really excited to get that passed and in front of you all to get feedback. So, that is it. So, now, I will step aside and give some space to Dr. Lewis for the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Board President Jones. I want to thank the over 230 patrons that are watching the Board meeting live, and remind those that will go back and watch this that we do livestream our Board meetings on YouTube. You can find that at usd497.org/webstream. We also broadcast our meetings on Midco Cable, Channel 26. Anyone wishing to speak during the meeting may email patroncommentary@usd497.org to receive a link to share public comments. The public also may email written comments to schoolboard@usd497.org. We will be hearing tonight an initial report from our Together Again Fall Planning Task Force. Our task force is made up of about 200 teachers and staff. We have also surveyed school families and staff about their needs and concerns related to the start of school. This planning process, as you know, is ongoing. Things change daily with this pandemic and is guided by federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines. And I will say this, there is no higher priority for us than the health and well-being of our students and staff. Now, this plan that, that you were here tonight, obviously, we will wait on final guidance to be approved by the Kansas State Department of Education, and they will approve that hopefully this Thursday, July 16th. Whatever August brings, we will be prepared to pivot should we need to. We will, we will be prepared to do our very best to meet our students' needs. You know, this is uncertain times, and it's an emotional time for our staff and our families. It's uncertain. These are uncharted waters that we're continuing to wade. And nobody knows what the future holds with this pandemic. And I sincerely appreciate the staff who are serving on our task force for their leadership, their time, and their dedication. This is a challenging task, but, but they've taken it and are really working together to develop a plan. We will not have all of the answers tonight. We will not have all of the answers next week. We may not have all the answers five weeks from now. But what, what I can assure you is that we will do our very best to provide high-quality instruction in a setting that is safe and supportive, as it can be, for our students and staff. We certainly appreciate our school community's patience, their participation in the surveys, their understanding, support, and continued partnership. Congratulations to our Lawrence Virtual School students who graduated on Saturday. We are proud of their accomplishments and excited for their future achievements. We look forward to celebrating our Free State and Lawrence High Class of 2020 graduations this Saturday. Free State High Ceremony is at 8:00 a.m. Lawrence High is at a new time at 7:00 p.m. I want to reiterate that we've been in constant communication with Lawrence Douglas County Public Health, and I've spoken specifically about our graduation plans to Douglas County Health Officer Dr. Thomas Marcelino. We do have safety measures in place, and we'll need everyone's cooperation to follow them. We are, excuse me, we are using outdoor athletic stadiums. We know that outdoor gatherings are safer than being indoors in terms of curbing the spread of COVID-19. Through our ticketing system, we are limiting the attendance of less than half of the stadium's capacity. We will observe six feet of physical distancing and seating for our students, staff, and guests. All attendees will be required to wear masks throughout the ceremonies. And of course, if you're feeling sick, or have been exposed to someone who is sick, or you're traveling in from one of those hot states or countries, please stay home. We are also working with Midco Sports Network to livestream and broadcast both graduation ceremonies so that those that may not be able to attend, whether you're here local, and obviously, if you're out of town, may watch online or on TV. So, there will be a local broadcast on Midco Cable as well as a, an online way to watch the graduation. The public may find more information about those viewing options on our district and school websites. In the event of inclement weather, we will announce a switch to our backup plan of drive-through diploma distribution. We will use our automated notification as always to notify our high school families of any changes. Due to the extension of Phase III restrictions, our high schools have canceled all indoor camps scheduled to start next week. Session two of summer strength and conditioning for high school student athletes will Session two of summer strength and conditioning for high school student athletes will proceed indoors, I'm sorry, outdoors, outdoors, that will proceed outdoors with health and safety measures in place. Our Farm to School program is celebrating that now all elementary schools now have raised garden beds. These are great outdoor learning environments for our students. I also want to thank Dylan Leisen and the Lawrence Journal World for this weekend's article on the Growing Food, Growing Health Garden at West Middle School. Dr. Stubblefield and myself was able to, were able to pay a visit this past Monday and talk to a couple of scholars. Obviously, we had our mask on, talked to a couple of scholars and the staff over there. I learned some things about gardening that I didn't know. This partnership that we have with them and with Merck has grown more than 25,000 pounds of produce. Student gardeners have been working hard to grow food for sharing in the free market, free farmers market at Edgewood, which is a low-income community in East Lawrence. And these students that are doing this, although they're being paid, they're pretty much, I don't want to say giving up their summer because this is meaningful work to them. We had a heavy rain last weekend, and so they were really going in there and lifting the leaves out of the soil so that the crop can grow. I mean, it was just amazing. It was hot out there, but yet still they were still out there. So thank you to those scholars that participated in that program. Food Services is piloting an online ordering system for school meals. This came about as a request of, from the Lawrence College and Career Center, but it very well could certainly have more uses to meet the needs of our students and staff. Excited to say that the Lawrence High Bund project is on schedule for substantial completion of Phase III construction by the start of the school year. We also have roof replacements underway at, this summer, both at Deerfield and Broken Arrow, and fire alarm system installation in progress at Deerfield and here at the Educational Support Center. Also here at E S C, staff will move back into the new enrollment center and the new food services offices next week, with the rest of this project being scheduled to complete by October. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. We now move on to patron commentary. We have a significant amount of patron commentary, so I'm going to read the participation requests we have. "The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes patron comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures we set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While we are not required to share your, or while you are not required to share your contact information, we ask that the information, so we ask for that information so that district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. The board president will invite comments on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcomed after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit comments to five minutes." So we are actually going to, we had quite a few comments around COVID-19 and the opening of the school district, so we, I mean, the opening in the fall, so we're going to save those comments if you wrote them in and asked us to read them for later in the meeting. But to start, we have a few folks waiting to provide patron commentary, and then we have some commentary we're all going to read. But to start, we have Zoann Julian to speak on the para-union, and you were going to introduce everyone together, I think.
Hi, my name is Isaac Gossi, and I am standing in tonight for my dad who is leaving at Justice Rice in Memphis, and for my mom who is busy taking care of her foster child. My dad wrote this letter, and I'm leaving it on his, on his disney house. USD 497 School Board. Right with this deep good heart, and I write here as a parent of a soon-to-be Free State High School student, and foster dad to a seven-year-old girl with non-reliant autism and a specialized autism classroom at Huron Elementary, and as husband to Joe Gossi, a para who worked part-time in the same classroom alone for around six years. I'm writing to express my support for official recognition of the P A L slash C W A Union and to ask that para educators be included in any and all virtual education opportunities going forward. I believe this will be of utmost importance, not just for the pairs themselves, but also for the teachers they work to support and the students they serve. Students working with pairs need folks who have received adequate training in professional development, have been communicated effectively by the district, and who are receiving equitable pay for the demanding work they did. As teachers all know, the recognized functioning para educators union would help make those aspirations a reality and would also serve to ensure higher para retention levels that we currently see. Having witnessed the work of para educators over the last several years, both in the school building itself and in our home during the current pandemic, I cannot stress enough what a vital role these individuals play in our school system. Trust me when I speak from experience, and no, it is not a problem when I say, in a district who not effectively pursue a safe, equitable education for their children without support of our district's para educators provided. As a parent, as a foster parent, and as a citizen of Lawrence, I am asking you as a board to do everything within your power to recognize the P A L slash C W A Union and to ensure our district's para educators continue to play a meaningful role in our public school system in the months and years to come. We simply cannot do without them. Respectfully submitted, Deepeng Gossi.
Thank you, Isaac. And now I believe we have Zoann Julian.
I'm Zoann Julian. Are you she, her, they, them?
She.
My job is to host classes and watch her from the hotel. I'm a social worker. I would like to be part of our special work with I E P. My journey in this district started 20 years ago, and I never thought it would last past the three months that I agreed to come here for. But I felt my passion, what I was meant to do, and the population of children and young adults I was meant to work with. They were learning and thriving, so I stayed. I never imagined that I would still be here 20 years later, but Lawrence Public Schools is an amazing district. But it has its shortcomings when it comes to the classified staff. Retention is the hardest for me. I work nine months of the year, leaving us scrambling for full-time employment each and every summer. As a single parent, simply living on a para's wages, it's difficult. I could get a second job somewhere, but with that is the need for evening childcare, and that comes with a steep price. After invested 20 years of my time and energy in this district, I shouldn't have to have a second job. So when I was approached about helping para professionals organize, I jumped at it. A union that's tailored to our needs, our protections, was a relief. I joined PAL C W A so that my voice was heard. My needs are met, making me the best para for my students that should get me undivided, have my attention undivided, and in this time of uncertainty, when we do not know what will happen with school reopenings. It's essential that we have paras on board who can support our special education students no matter what. We are all students, one team. Again, my name is Zoann Julian, and I hope you opt into para and recognize PAL C W A. Thank you.
Thank you. We next have comments from the Lawrence Education Justice Collective. Sansara Owens is here, Liz Cricker is here, and Grace McMillan. And I'm not sure what order we have speakers, but thank you for coming, and we're ready when you are.
Hello. I don't think I've called anyone. My name is Sansara Owens, pro-justice, and I'm a licensed social worker with a local foster care agency with graduate work in restorative justice within Chicago Public Schools, current member of Lawrence Education Justice Collective. I'm just going to, can, can you, there's some feedback. Can you make sure that everybody is muted so that we can hear Sansara clearly?
I also think if there's more than one, like, so if someone's recording within the same, have.
It's in the same space?
Yeah, that happens a lot. Sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we, I just want to make sure we hear you.
I'll start, and then Liz Cricker will go after me, and then Grace Wells.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Sansara Owens, pro-justice, and I am a licensed social worker with a local foster care agency with graduate work in restorative justice within Chicago Public Schools and a current member of Lawrence Education Justice Collective, L E J C. L E J C has prepared a statement that has been emailed to everyone on the board today. It reads, "L E J C is a collection of community members, educators, social workers, and students who are concerned about the relationships among young people, schools, and prisons, as well as equity and racial justice in USD 497. We are working in alignment with National Black Lives Matter at school. On June 23rd, Dr. Lewis emphasized the need to move with a sense of urgency during a Kansas Equity Series sponsored by the United School Administrators of Kansas. We agree with Dr. Lewis. Moreover, we believe that if Dr. Lewis and those of you who make up the school board are serious about ensuring equity and racial justice at USD 497, you will work to implement police-free schools and reimagine safety. The police-free schools action demand is to ask you to vote on July 27, 2020, to end the current M O U contract with the City of Lawrence for school resource officers at USD 497. In starting in elementary schools, the presence of police in schools increases the chances that youth will be referred to law enforcement for less serious crimes. Moreover, interactions with police in school are vastly inequitable, with black youth more likely to be referred to law enforcement or subjected to school-related arrests than white students. The natural trend of disproportionate discipline against black youth is reflected in USD 497's suspension rate of black students. While black students make up 6.6% of the student population, they make up over 20% of the students who receive out-of-school suspensions. Much literature has documented black youth's experience with surveillance and punishment by police in schools and their discomfort with police presence. All black youth, especially and including disabled students of color and LGBTQIA students of color, are also overrepresented in school discipline and report harassment in interactions with and arrests by law enforcement. This data matters because there's a direct link between schools and prisons. As noted in an April 2019 article in the Lawrence Journal World, African-American youth outnumbered white youth in admissions to the juvenile detention center of Douglas County, where the population is 83.5% white. In 2017, youth admitted to the Douglas County J D C were approximately 41% white and 49.5% African-American. We must disrupt the connection between schools and prisons, and one way to do this is to dissolve the relationship between USD 497 and the City of Lawrence Police Department. Approximately 800 stakeholders from Lawrence, Kansas, have signed a petition to ban police from USD 497. This petition was started by Katie Meston Ward, a recent graduate from Free State High School. As one individual who signed the petition stated, "Ho, ho, SROs have never made me feel safe as a K through 12 student of USD 497. Free State's handling of racial discrimination has been disappointing and telling of where administration stands. Students deserve to feel safe in their school, free from racial profiling and disproportionate punishments," end quote. Research simply does not support police in schools, and in fact illustrates how youth of color and black youth specifically are not made safer by police in schools. Importantly, there are research-based alternatives to police and security measures in elementary and secondary schools that can be engaged so that safety is actually improved. These alternatives suggest that safety is increased when black and multiply marginalized youth feel connected to their schools, and police in schools interfere with that connection. In the last month, school districts across the country have discontinued school resource officer programs and are directing resources towards social services and evidence-based methods to address social and emotional needs of these students. My colleague, Liz Cricker, will continue the statement in how do they reimagine safety."
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Liz Cricker. My pronouns are she, her. I am also a licensed social worker. In full transparency, I work at Free State. However, tonight I am speaking as a member of the Lawrence Education Justice Collective. I also want to acknowledge the concerns across the community about a safe reopening during the COVID pandemic. And central to considering safe reopening, whether that be in-person, online, or a hybrid of that, is police-free schools and specific steps that we can and should take to reimagine safety. So I'm going to list those here, starting with ending zero tolerance. Within this action, we, action demand, we do include, because we know that this was discussed at the last board meeting, but we want to clarify that this includes punitive discipline policies and practices and implementing district-wide restorative justice programming. We ask and demand to mandate black history and ethnic studies in K through 12 curriculum. Hire more black teachers. Vote to opt into para and recognize the Para Educators Association of Lawrence, C W A. Hire more mental health staff, specifically black mental health providers. Work with county and state entities to divest from punitive truancy practices and provide truancy interventions to replace court referrals and J D C involvement. Partner with Sanctuary Alliance to provide training on procedural practices for non-cooperation with ICE, and change the name of Pinkney Elementary School. Our students need increased resources in mental health services, arts programs, restored injustice programs, culturally sustaining ethnic studies curriculum, culturally diverse curriculum, culturally inclusive curriculum, training for all white, cis-led, able-bodied school staff on how to interact with and support students in ways that are humanizing, developmentally appropriate, culturally congruent, culturally sensitive, and culturally inclusive, and other resources to help our young people heal, grow, and build collectively. All of these programs must take a race-conscious approach, refuse to be anti-black and race evasive, and address multiple oppressions, especially considering that research reveals racism and anti-blackness influence decisions regarding policy, pedagogy, curriculum, and relationships in schools. As a district, we can engage in abolitionist teaching stance, demanding better from our district and schools, encouraging healing and building solidarity with black youth and other multiply marginalized youth. Sincerely, the Lawrence Education Justice Collective. L E J C is working in alignment with National Black Lives Matter at school and in concert with many endorsing local community partners, including Black Lawrence, B L M O R K, Justice Ticket for Douglas County, Shannon Portio, Shannon Reed, and Cooper Overstreet, Lawrence D F A, Lawrence Food Not Bombs, Lawrence Mutual Aid Network, People's Out and Operated Collective Housing, Rainbow Kids and Families, Sanctuary Alliance Lawrence, Kansas, and Sunrise Project. Our work is alongside communities in over 80 cities, including Baltimore, Charlottesville, Chicago, Columbus, Denver, Detroit, Durham, Milwaukee, Minneapolis, Oakland, Philadelphia, Portland, Rochester, San Francisco, and Washington, D.C., and we continue to expand our collaborations and partnerships within our local Lawrence community. Thank you. I am now going to turn it over to our third representative, Grace McMillan.
I can't see myself. Am I on?
Um, I can't see myself. Am I on?
You're on. We can't, we can't see you either, but we can definitely hear you.
Hmm, I wonder what's going on. It's not working. It's my first time using this web app.
That's okay. We can see you now, Grace.
There we go. Thank you. As my colleague said, my name is Grace McMillan. I'm also a licensed social worker in the state of Kansas, and I also work in our community as a mental health therapist, providing therapeutic interventions to high school students in a specialized educational setting. I've been involved with the Lawrence Education Justice Collective since its creation last year due to concerns regarding the equity and safety of marginalized youth in our educational environment. I'm also the parent of two students in different schools in USD 497. As a mental health professional and as a mother, I want to amplify the concerns outlined in the letter read by my social work and LEJC colleagues. I implore each of the board members to read the letter and accompanying research that was included. Although many hold the belief that placing police in our schools keeps our students and our staff safe, the research, as you've heard, shows that this is not true. When we fund these positions of police officers in our school environment, this emits critical resources that can actually create community and lead to safety in our school. Research shows that it is a disconnection from community and the lack of healthy and safe relationships with trusted adults that can often contribute to the types of behaviors that police, police are currently asked to intervene in, such as substance use and abuse and disruptive behavior in classrooms. We also recognize that many marginalized youth and their families have negative historical experiences with law enforcement, and the presence of police in our educational environment does not conform to the expectation of trauma-informed schools, which is vital to student success and family participation. We know schools are safer with qualified mental health professionals available to support our students in their growing needs. Our current staffing levels do not allow our incredible social workers or rep therapists to support all the students that need services. Creating police-free schools can divert the funding back to these important and effective resources. LEJC will be sharing resources, research, and videos in an online campaign strategy for 15 Days to Police-Free Schools on Facebook. This is starting today with this public commentary during the school board. All of you are invited, the school board and the community, to participate in this online learning activity to understand what defunding the police and what police-free schools mean for real safety in our community. In solidarity with supporting an equitable and encompassing educational environment, we know that police-free schools are the only option. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Appreciate that you all showed up. We have additional commentary, folks waiting online also to address issues related to police in schools. Cooper Overstreet, Melissa Freiberger, and Payla Alor, Dee Kemp, and Dr. Kendra J. Pittman. It looks like I have Cooper first listed, so if that's workable, that, if you're ready to go.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. My name's Cooper Overstreet, attorney here in Lawrence. This summer, young people, families, and teachers' unions, members across the country have been fighting to make Black Lives Matter in our schools and to pressure school district leaders to reopen safely or implement virtual instruction. Today, teachers, parents, staff, students, and community members are at our, this school board meeting right now, making their voices heard for police-free schools and in order to reimagine safety. As an attorney who practices in our juvenile court system, I know that any promise in this community to prioritize social services over incarceration has to include a discussion of our schools. Schools are underfunded and policed. Understirred students end up in our court system, in our criminal court system, and all too often get prosecuted as adults, and many of them spend the rest of their lives somehow involved in the system. The people closest to the problems are closest to the solutions, and that means political leaders need to be listening to the voices of teachers, students, and staff. Today, those voices are saying that it's not safe to reopen schools with only the measures that the Kansas Board of Education has recommended, and that opening schools with the same punitive policies instead of reimagining learning and safety will result in the further criminalization of black and brown students. That is why, as an individual intimately familiar with the negative impacts of the criminal justice system on black and brown youth, I urge this board to reimagine safety in our schools and work towards more just practices and police-free schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa and Payla, are you available?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I'm Melissa Freiberger, pronouns she/her, director of Sunrise Project, and I'm here with Paula to share Sunrise Project solidarity with police-free schools. We are a social justice organization devoted to providing space and opportunities to people of all ages and backgrounds to build an equitable community. Since Sunrise started in 2015, we have worked with youth of all ages, including those in middle and high school, and we are here to amplify their lived experiences and voices. Our organization is built on community relationships, and through constant conversations, we feel confident speaking out on racism and police in schools. Because Sunrise is a space where social issues and social change is frequently discussed, the topics of racism in schools emerge on a regular basis in our youth programs. For example, at our February Activate Your Voice Youth Leadership Session with over 20 mostly high school youth, a group that included many youth of color and many youth in the foster care system, racism at the high schools was a major theme in our discussion of where youth want to see change in our community. Youth share that they do not feel listened to, that no matter who they talk to in the school administration, that they feel like nothing is changing or making a difference in their school communities. They feel like very few adults in the schools care or see a need for changes. School counselors, at least from the experiences of the youth we work with, were not viewed as a resource for change. Paula will continue.
I'm Paula Alor. I'm the, I use pronouns she/her, and I'm the program manager here at Sunrise Project. I've worked closely with youth in our Growing Roots program this summer, and it connects with youth in the foster care system, the opportunities to grow, cook, build relationships, and practice self-care. Many of the youth share with us their personal experiences in the criminal legal system and being in state custody. Youth who currently live within the system have to worry about meeting law enforcement throughout their everyday lives and should not have to face it in their school. Youth should not be considered difficult just because of their lived experiences or based on their identities. We have learned above all else, these youth need and want a sense of belonging and autonomy in their lives. We want to amplify their voices and needs for less policing of their bodies and more connection here and resources. From working with young people, we have been able to hold programming where they are not reprimanded for the way their trauma manifests in their daily lives, and we believe this exists within all schools as well. We advocate for police-free schools because we believe there are restorative ways to work with young people and to remind support to find a root of problems they may be facing.
Melissa and Payla, are you there?
Yeah, we're still here.
Okay. Are you, are you done?
Yes, we are done.
I, I just want to say thank you to you both, and then I have to, I just cannot say this. They are my neighbors, Sunflower Project is, and I love the work that you all do. Thank you so much. So I'm glad you're here. Next, we have Dee Kemp.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. My name's Demetrius Kemp, and I'm a security guard at Free State High School. I've worked at both high schools as a security guard, so I've worked with SROs at Lawrence High and SROs at Free State. What I can tell you is, I don't have a lot of stats. I don't have any stats, actually. I can tell you what I see every day, what I deal with every day, and what they deal with every day. First off, no SRO is dealing out punishment for kids. We're not suspending anybody. They're not. They don't get a voice in how long a kid gets suspended. That comes from administration. And all I keep hearing is stats about how the police, the SROs are kicking kids out of school, arresting kids. If they arrest a kid at school, it's because that kid committed a crime that you would get arrested for anywhere, not just at school. And, you know, as soon as that happens, everybody wants to say, oh, they're bad, they're bad. Hey, I get it. I'm mad with police right now myself, but I also know that there are police that do their job, and there are police that don't do their job, and they do all the wrong stuff. Just like I know there are people out there like me, like you guys sitting there, that are good people, and they do what they're supposed to do, but there are also bad people. Are we supposed to get rid of all the people because some of them are bad? No, we need to fix the problem. And taking SROs out of the school is not going to fix the problem. They are not just there to suspend your kids. No. They're there to protect that building, protect the people in there, protect your kids. And I feel like as soon as we remove them out of school, everything's going to go crazy. I kept in that building every day. I might not be the first person there, but I'm pretty much the last person to leave. I walk those halls every day. I listen to these kids. I listen to what they're saying. I talk to them. You know, it's not a kid in that building that I haven't talked to five times this year. We had 1,844 kids. Not one of those kids who said they don't, they don't know who I am, that they've had a problem and I, I just walked away from them or didn't help them. And I know whenever I took a kid to SRO, they helped. They fixed the problem. So I hear everybody saying how these SROs are punishing kids. That's not happening. And stats that we're talking about, I mean, we just did a survey, and I think in that survey, 74% of those surveyed felt like we needed the SROs. So I don't know where this outstanding number of we don't need SROs is coming from, but from the survey that I saw from the school district, that's not there. So you can't talk to ten kids that have problems with police and then say, okay, all kids don't like the SROs. No, that's not fair. If we're going to make the decision based on what's going on, you can't, we can't do that either. Everybody's upset right now with the police. Do you want to get rid of the police? No, because the streets are running crazy. They're just running crazy with people doing whatever they want to do. I don't want to live in that world. I don't want my kids to grow up in that world. I don't want the kids that I go in there every day and deal with and talk to and help and push to get better. I don't want them to deal with that. So we need to stop, point the finger and say, oh, it's all their fault. No, it's our fault too. So to fix it, we need to sit down and figure out what we need to do. I don't see any social worker or any mental health person jumping out there and stopping the gun. I don't even see security guards doing it, but I would do it. So I, I don't think we should remove the SROs.
Thank you, Dee. We next have Dr. Pittman. Oh, Dr. Pittman, I see that you were going to speak to-
I want to make sure my comments aren't on police officer-
Yeah, that, I, I'm seeing that, yeah. So we, we will take public comment on the issues related to COVID-19 and the opening of schools when we come to that item on the agenda. So if you could just hang tight, we will be getting to that shortly. Okay, we have additional comments to be read. They're also going to keep to that five-minute. So if you could, if, some of these are quite long, so, yeah, okay. So I pass these out, these, if you, I pass out to board members the stuff that we wanted to be read. Carol, you said you had something from a student to start?
Yes, it's, it's about Powell.
Oh, it is? Yeah, do you want to go ahead with that?
Sure, absolutely. I received this email from one of our scholars, and, and out of respect for them, they asked that I not reveal their, their name or their gender, but I felt like there, that this, this voice in this email was very important to me to read. So I got, I was able to get his mother's, or get their mom's permission and read it. But, okay, here we go. And as, as Melissa Freiberger said, it's important to hear the voice of our youth. Okay, "I have an IEP for more than one thing. Part of my IEP is for gifted services, but the other part is not. There are many things that have always been challenging for me at school, and my first year of middle school was no exception. A lot of people would be surprised to hear this because I don't seem like a kid with an IEP, to most people who know me. I want to tell you that I have experienced and what I have observed from my point of view because I think a lot of times that people don't remember to ask kids what they think or care about. In this last year, I have gotten upset at times, bad enough that I needed to leave the classroom to cool down. I've cried in class. I've missed classes because I needed to talk to someone. I've been written up with a minor, yet I'm also a straight A student, have performed in my school plays and go to after-school clubs. I'm involved, but I have real challenges. I have an IEP for a reason, and one thing that has always helped me is the pairs in my classroom. Just knowing that they're there calms me down, and when I become too overwhelmed, they are the ones who notice first. They help me before I can help myself. When my frustration or inability to focus or lack of organization is getting the best of me, they quietly have my back and get me back on course, and this is just me. I know for sure that my first year of middle school could have been a tragedy of some sort if I hadn't had a pair looking out for me and helping me when I needed it. When I think about what makes a pair so important, I can think of instances I've seen in my classrooms. There are many times when the pair calmly diffused really disruptive students, kids who are about one minute away from getting written up with a major. I've seen them helping five or six different kids in one classroom. Sometimes those kids are working on different things and at different speeds or levels. Some classes have a lot of kids with IEPs, exclamation point. Pairs make a big difference to those of us that need them, and I know that they don't get paid enough. Everyone knows this. I know that they don't always get told things that are happening at school, like they get left out of being told things they should know, and I know there's not enough pairs. Some classrooms have so many kids and only one pair, and some students need a pair, but they don't have one in their class. And some of the pairs in my school quit. This is what I see. I don't understand everything. I'm just 12, but I know enough to know that when you value someone, you treat them with respect. I understand that I'm a special education student who has not just a need for a pair, but a right to a pair. So I'm trying to understand why you all would keep pairs from being treated with respect and why you wouldn't let them start a union. This will help them. Why would you not want them to have more respect or more rights? Me and all the other students with IEPs need pairs to be as good as they possibly can be, and if you're not valuing a pair, then you're not valuing us either. Thank you for listening. And I assured the student that I would get this on the, on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erica, you have some to, you want to go ahead with them?
Yeah, okay. This first one is from a student who would prefer to remain anonymous. "For me, whenever I see police, it gives me the feeling that I am in an unsafe situation. That is what I associate with them. I feel by putting more police at school, they feel like kids aren't safe at school." This was written by a seventh-grade student. My second one, it says, "Hello, my name is Michael Dupree. I live with my wife, Kathy, at 2000 Kentucky here in Lawrence, Kansas. We are retired and have been the owners of and lived in this address for more than 22 years. Recent surveying and utility locating in our neighborhood and on our property made us aware of the Safe Routes to School SRTS program. That surveying and utility locating indicates our property is slated for-" That surveying and utility locating indicates our property is slated for a sidewalk under the SRTS program. However, it is our understanding that the Lawrence School Board must still approve the design of the SRTS projects to be completed. Before that approval is voted, voted upon, we are asking a member or ideally members of the board to come to our neighborhood. We are asking you to visit with us and see what is planned for our neighborhood and our property and the other three properties along Twi- along Twentieth Street between Tennessee and Vermont."
Okay. GR, the commentary that I gave you to read is related to COVID-19, right?
Correct.
So I think I have the last commentary that's not related. So this is from Cynthia U. Banks. And she is going to, she asks that we address concerns for safety in our schools during this time of racial unrest. Get my mask off to do this. "First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns. All too often, over the past thirty-plus years or so, I know that my concerns with safety and other issues in our schools were not being heard and that my request to assist on committees when construction, my concerns were always safety and constructability within budget. What was happening in our schools fell on deaf ears. I know that for a very long time, until Anna was hired as interim superintendent and then when Dr. Lewis was hired, that our educators preferred to put mostly our committee, those with multiple degrees, those who were employed at the university, business leaders and our wives of those who were accomplished in the community. Not very often at all were the concerns and recommendations of everyday parents considered, let alone the parents of color. It is different now, and for this change, I must thank the current administration and school board members. So as a parent, and specifically a parent of color, school safety has been an important issue for me for quite some time. For many white parents I have spoken with, that concern started with our nation, began to see mass shootings in the schools. Until that time, sending their child off to school was never really a stressful or concerning time. Years ago, my mother confided in me concerning her fears for my safety when I was a child attending integrated schools. She worried, worried daily about the students and teachers treating me differently in a negative way because I was black. And she was right to worry. I tried my best to never let her know of the hardship I experienced in elementary school where I often, the only one or one of two blacks in the, in class. The only time she knew that I experienced, the only time she knew what I experienced was when I came home with torn clothes, bruises, scrapes and scratches. I say all this to say that black families have been concerned for our children's safety for many years and perhaps that is why I speak up often for the safety of our children of color today in the Lawrence School District. My concern now is especially heightened due to racial unrest in our nation. I would hate to see someone racist, someone racist decide to relegate against, to retaliate against people of color for what they feel is happening unjustly against them. For example, statues coming down, flags being buried, community marches, police being fired due to inhumane treatment against blacks and others of color. Before I go further, please understand that I love LHS, our new principal. All my children attend LHS. However, I am concerned about the safety measures that were being taken last year. And if they have changed or improved for the coming year, this would be something I'm not aware of. So understand that my next comments are a reflection of the past years. I have heard, quote, "The students are safe in our schools and we have a plan in place for when an active shooter gets into the school. And we have been incredibly lucky that when a student has brought a gun or a knife into the school, the other students have been able to alert us," end quote. My son was one of those who spoke up when a kid brought a gun to school last year. Thank God he was not afraid to speak up. However, he did receive backlash from it and he told me it made him think that maybe he would not have said anything. I thank the LHS principal and our superintendent for personally letting him know that what he did was the right thing, which helped Vincent then feel confident about his decision. But what concerns me in these situations is that there are no plans to keep the guns and knives out of the school in the first place. Why is there no plan in place to keep active shooters out of the school? It would be nice to also have proactive plans, not only reactive plans. I pray that you understand the point that I am trying to make. Vincent or any student should not have to be the one responsible to turn in the kid with the gun. The gun should not have been there in the first place. All we need is one white nationalist kid to bring a gun to school, wanting to retaliate against blacks this fall. The administration might not know that he has a gun until it's too late because the thoughts might be, "Hey, it was not a big deal," or "A deal last year, no, no one got hurt," or "I'm not going to turn him in." You see how people treated Jimmy when he turned it in last year, or "He might be a little different, but he's a good kid and would not shoot anyone." Also, when he, when we discuss an active shooter situation, new construction at LHS has lost glass and could easily allow access, has a lot of glass and could easily allow access to a wannabe active shooter. Is there a plan to keep that person out? Has this been discussed? My request in the last meeting that I attended with Anna was that the district consider how seriously safety need, serious safety needs to be now because of the last several months of our nation. We can no longer think in terms of how we used to do almost everything before March of this year. It is time to plan for a new normal, a new way to teach, keep healthy and especially protect all of our students. As a parent of a child of color, I hope that the district sees how particularly vulnerable these children could be going back to school this fall. Again, thank you for your time. Blessings to you all and to your children. Cynthia U. Banks. Okay, I think that that is the conclusion of patron commentary, correct? Until we get to COVID-19? Okay. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. We need a motion-
Board commentary.
Oh, yeah, you guys have stuff to say too. Alright, um, board commentary? No, yeah, anybody?
I have a little bit. Alright, so, first I'd like to thank Melissa for her leadership and recruiting me for the board and also for your continued partnership throughout this journey. And I'm looking forward to working for, with you, Kelly, in the leadership capacity. So today I had a meeting with Doc, with Mr. Grayburn and his team to brainstorm ways to create affinity in IPS, independent plan of study groups. We discussed how to best organize students to meet the purpose of helping students support one another while aligning with the district's equity and diversity goals. And also creating an environment for students to discuss racial matters and building meaningful partnerships and mentorships throughout those groups. So, it was a really good conversation that we had today and we're going to build on that for next time. Thanks.
Other commentary? Paula?
We attended the policy committee.
I left early.
I attended with Shannon and also just recently joined the Equity Advisory Group for Douglas County and I'm on the Economic Recovery Team. But that's pretty much what I've got up to. Shannon, if you want to give, would you mind sharing out on the policy committee?
I'm, I'm sorry, Paula, I'm having a little trouble hearing. It might be just that mic, but did you say, ask if I could share out about policy? Was that the question?
Yeah.
Oh, I will, I will. I have some other board commentary too, so I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, alright, thank you. Thank you, Paula. Shannon, you said you've got some to contribute?
A couple quick things. First of all, just wanted to thank Melissa for her leadership this last year and say congratulations, Kelly to you and to Erica. And I'm looking forward to your leadership in the coming year. Wanted to congratulate Dr. Lewis on his amazing participation in the Canvas Equity Series event that took place a couple weeks ago. I watched that one in, the second event in the series and I, I just am so proud of your leadership, Dr. Lewis, so thank you for sharing your voice. It's, it's really needed for our, our board members and districts across the state. And so, thank you for giving your time to do that. The policy committee met this last week and we are continuing to work on some recommended, recommended plans to amend our policy on site councils and to provide some clearer guidance in the form of some updated and redrafted gap for our site councils, including some sample bylaws or recommended bylaws for our site councils to adopt. So, that work is ongoing. We've made some good progress on the direction we wanted to see with that policy and just have some tweaking to do and hope to have that to the board in the coming, in the coming weeks for a first read. Then, we have several other things on our agenda for policy, including probably looking at some additional updates around the new Title IX regulations. I think we're reading on guidance from KASB and some other sources to really help us fully understand what we may need to address from a policy perspective to make sure that we're in full compliance with the new, some of the new guidance on those regulations. We had, GR and I had a facilities meeting this past week also. As Dr. Lewis, I believe, mentioned, we're on schedule with our construction projects this summer, which is, which is great news. The one hiccup that we learned about is that we have some theater equipment that's going to be, that's not going to arrive when we anticipated it would arrive at Liberty Memorial. So we are trying to work around those delays on Jigga Dot and solve lots of roof repairs and other things going on this summer. We also had a good discussion about cleaning equipment and protocols and, and just in general what that might look like as we, as we go back into the school year. So I, I just wanted to share that we've been talking about those issues in the facilities committee and appreciate that update about it. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Now we move on to consent agenda, unless GR, Carol?
I just wanted to say I'm not trying to look cool. I actually, these are prescription glasses and I left my regular glasses in the car, so I need to see.
You do look cool though, so it works both ways. Yeah. Other commentary? Okay, so, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
This is GR. I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
A second. This is Melissa.
Kimball?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Smith? Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Together Again Fall 2020 Reopening Task Forces and Working Group update. We do have public commentary on this, Anna. Would it be helpful for you if we read it? If you wanted to respond to any of that, or would you like to wait until, or Dr. Stebbelfield, would you like us to wait until we're done? Can address some of the things within it? Would that be okay with Dr. Lewis?
Kelly, I thought we were so close to hear it, discuss it and then do the comments.
We were, but I wasn't sure if we, this would give Anna-
Oh, okay.
They could address some of the issues that have been coming up in multiple emails. So, if that's okay, we'll just move the order unless there's any objection to that. So, GR?
Yes. So I have two com- comments that were, commentary that were sent to us. The first, "I'm writing to the school board to indicate my grave concern at USC 497's decision to allow students and staff to return to brick and mortar schooling even if as a county we remain in Phase Three. Understand that parents have been given the option regarding how they want students to return to school, but staff members have not been afforded that same option. In speaking with employees of our district, many feel as though they are forced to submit and knowingly risk their lives and the lives of their families to return to brick and mortar, file a claim through the ADA for accommodations or resign. These are not acceptable options. We should not be willing to put some lives at risk over others. We should not accept potential death or serious illness just to return to school buildings when we have other safe, low-risk options available to school our children. As a concerned Lawrence community member, I urge you to consider beginning the school year as remote learning only and only return when it is safe for all staff and students to do so without great risk. Please support the initiative #14DaysNoNewCases for the health and safety of the Douglas County community. We should strive for no lives to be lost in this community. Please keep us safe." And then the second one. "To whom this may concern, I'm a proud teacher in USC 497. For the past nine years, I have worked at Kennedy Elementary School as a kindergarten teacher, fourth grade teacher, and soon to be fifth grade teacher. I have served on committees, leadership teams and led professional development. I love what I do and I take what I do very seriously. My car is often one of the last to leave and we budget money in our family for the expenses that I will be spending on my students and classrooms throughout the school year. I'm sharing this with you because I need you to know just how much I care about my job and the students and how absolutely terrified I am for the reopening of schools this fall. I've been a part of demonstrations in case of an active shooter. I can still put myself immediately back in that demonstration. It has not left me. I have stayed. Through cuts and lack of funding, watching coworkers be shuffled around and others just let go, I have stayed. Adoptions of new curriculum occurring without professional development because there is no money, I have stayed. When students in my classroom go without services because there is a paraprofessional shortage and/or we do not have enough teachers to cover the extensive needs. I have remained professional and tried my very best to provide services myself, even though we are violating the law. I have stayed. I've stayed because I know the public education is a cornerstone of society and I believe in its power. Today, right now, I am wondering why I have stayed. This is how I and my fellow educators are to be treated. I am absolutely distraught that I am being put in a position where I am watching our government and the powers that be put teachers in a position where we have to risk our lives and that our families, and that of our families so that things can go back to normal. I should not have to prove my loyalty to my students and public education by risking my life and that of my family. We have two children in elementary school and I am currently pregnant, expected, expecting this August. Are you prepared to answer their questions if and when someone they know dies from this when they didn't have to? Are you prepared to leave them motherless or fatherless or both? USC 497 has been pushing trauma awareness and social emotional learning the past several years. As caring adults, it is responsible for us to knowingly put students in a position where they could witness the death of a teacher, classmate or staff member? Is that being trauma-sensitive? However, to be clear, this is not just about me and my family. I love the Lawrence community, all of it, and if things push forward, our students will be in close contact with one another and potentially bring COVID-19 home with them. I work at a school that has high rates of children and families in poverty. We know that these families are at higher risk of contracting the disease and dying due to the lack of medical attention and healthcare. Are you ready to sign off on that? USC 497 prides itself on working to be an equitable school district. How will you ensure that certain schools are not being left behind? My husband is a high school teacher. He teaches sophomores and seniors. Many of the seniors will be eighteen this year. In the eyes of the law, they are adults. Research, although I do not think we really know enough to use this as empirical data, say that adults spread the disease. Would that mean that seniors in high school are adults? Are you prepared for the onslaught of cases riling the halls of our high schools? How will teachers and administrators monitor bathrooms, hallways, lockers, lunchrooms? Free State High School has around nineteen hundred students. Even if a third of those stay home, there would still be around twelve hundred students in the building. In places that have been hardest hit, the data says that one out of thirty-two people will contract the disease. Do we snuff out the lives of teachers and students knowingly? This, there is a solution. We can follow the NEA's plan. Demand funding, demand PPE for everyone, demand that most of our children in grades second through twelve must wear masks. Donald Trump does not care about our children. Betsy DeVos does not care about our children. This is political and my life, my husband's life, my children's lives, our students' lives, our coworkers' lives, our fellow educators' lives, our custodial staff's lives, our support staff's lives, our lives should not be pawns in this game. Do the right thing. Provoke school until we have no new cases for fourteen days. Give educators time to develop rigorous and engaging virtual classrooms. Work with families in the community that are suffering and have typically been let down by the public school system. Ask them what they need. Go to them, find them. Our community is strong. I have watched us come together over the last few months. We can be leaders. It does not have to be this way."
This is Carol. I have four emails. This first one is from, excuse me, Kayla Dear. "I have a fourth grader at New York Elementary. I'm very concerned with the numbers that, the highest they've ever been, that you are considering reopening. Why would you think it's safe to return now when you closed in the spring when numbers were low? Please do what's best for the health and safety of our community, children and teachers, and don't be pressured to reopen when it's clearly unsafe to do so. Thank you." And the second one is from Amanda Lutz. "Hi there. I'm concerned about teachers and students being exposed to this virus in the fall. I know I can choose to let my kiddo learn from home, but I'm very concerned about teachers and staff and anyone who doesn't have that choice. Is there a plan to limit the number of kids in classes? Limit number of days? Some way teachers can opt to teach online if they don't feel comfortable? It just feels like deciding, when we are in the thick of this, that classes are going to happen in the buildings is irresponsible. I'm sure a lot of parents are frustrated with online learning and online classes were less stellar in the spring. But I'd rather be a little frustrated than have our kids and teachers- rather be a little frustrated than have our kids and teachers get sick and pass this along to vulnerable family members. Just wanted to pass along my concerns. I think the most important thing is to listen to medical experts right now. Thanks for your time. Amanda Lutz." And this is from Sarah Mazakowski. "To whom it may concern, I'm a parent of two incoming sixth graders. I'm very concerned for the safety of my children and all the staff and faculty and the teachers, in the schools. Teachers and students deserve better, and it must happen. If student, if parents were having to donate items like Lysol, Kleenex, and sanitizer before COVID-19, how can you ensure and expect that they will have the proper provisions this fall to protect all teachers, faculty, staff, and students from coronavirus? Many schools do not even have the proper ventilation and functioning windows to open in classrooms for fresh air. This is unacceptable and deplorable. This is not the time to open schools. You are putting so many lives in danger if you do so. The only safe and socially responsible thing to do is to have online-only learning until Douglas County has 14 days of zero coronavirus cases. This is crucial for everyone's health and safety. There's no possible way teachers can maintain six feet distance with the children in their classrooms, let alone keep masks on kids and everything else they have to do during an entire school day. It is just not possible. It is also crucial that the online learning experience is rigorous. I believe that all staff did their best implementing online learning to the best of their ability this past spring due to the abrupt change. However, there's been a lot, there's been a long time since learning or plan for better online learning this fall. Children need more guidance and support, as do the parents who will be co-teaching them. These last few weeks before the start of school need to be used for implementing a better online learning experience, not figuring out how to cram kids and teachers into an unsafe environment. Opening schools should be discussed when we have flattened the curve and even when it should not have kids at full capacity." And the fourth one is from Emily Ray. "Good evening. My name is Emily Ray. I am a parent of three children attending Lawrence Public Schools, as well as a specialized classroom teacher in Lawrence Public Schools. I'm writing to express my concern about reopening schools to full-time brick and mortar buildings in the midst of a local and statewide surge in COVID-19 cases. While I understand that you plan to give parents a choice on whether to have their children attend virtually or in building, I have concerns about this in several respects. First, while I fully endorse parent choice, I believe that parent choice needs to be an informed choice. As an employee of the district, I have serious concerns about our ability to adhere to best practices as recommended by the CDC to prevent the transmission and spread of the deadly and novel COVID-19 virus. Some aspects of the recommendations should be nearly impossible to achieve, namely, social distancing. Second, recent, recently, many major media outlets covered a commentary released with signatures of 239 scientists asserting that airborne transmission of aerosized COVID-19 is important and needs to be considered in protective measures. Social distancing and hand washing do not effectively mitigate aerosol transmission as these particles stay airborne for up to hours at a time. To address airborne transmission of aerosized, aerosized virus mask or ill filtration, HVAC units equipped with high-grade filters, use of in-room air purifiers, and ventilation with outside air are your most effective strategies. Before asking parents to choose the best schooling choice for their child, it is critical to clearly and definitively lay out the COVID-19 mitigation measures that will be implemented. Otherwise, families are making a perceived risk-benefit decision without having enough information on the risk. Rather than rush to open schools as scheduled, I humbly request that you wait to fully reopen schools and invest in a robust online learning system until such a time as a, as a one of the, one of the two following conditions are met. Either, one, schools are equipped, scheduled, staffed, and funded to meet all CDC guidelines to prevent the transmission and spread of COVID-19, or, number two, we have 14 days with no new cases in our county as reported by the local health department. And in bold, most importantly, we can make up for the lost time in the classroom. We cannot make up for lost lives of students, staff, or community members. Thank you so much for listening to my concerns."
Sorry, I've gotta get really close. Want me to take it? Is it...?
No, it's okay. I can do it.
"I am a parent to four children who attended Lawrence Public Schools. I work as a substitute teacher in Lawrence, and I serve as a volunteer in my kid's classroom. I last came to speak to the school board a few weeks before everything shut down for COVID-19. My comments drew attention to the problems our schools faced with understaffing and the negative effects it was having on classroom culture. So much has changed since then. I sincerely thank all of the members of the school board, our superintendent, Dr. Lewis, and the entire team that gracefully and compassionately led our public school community through the changes required to protect ourselves from the pandemic. I was able to sleep better at night knowing you all were the ones making decisions for our community that considered the big picture and worked toward the greatest good, and you delivered for us. Well done." And so on to the next hill to climb with the plans for reopening schools during the pandemic. "Today, I speak on behalf of myself and other people in my circle, other parents, teachers, and substitutes, paras, and school staff. There is a consensus that for stability's sake, we should make virtual school the baseline for everyone for at least the first part of the school year. If the mission of the school district is to provide academic instruction, the most stable way to deliver that is virtually, to opt out of in-person school attendance. I know there's a lot of pressure to open the school buildings because our society relies on public schools as daycare, but this is an unacceptable option for a lot of reasons. It is costly from a monetary standpoint and a logistical nightmare from a staffing perspective to open the school buildings to the community at large while adhering to pandemic safety protocols. We face a tremendous amount of work and would invest a huge amount of money to open schools only to have to close them numerous times throughout the year as COVID spreads in a fertile environment like in-person attendance would be. Things we would need to implement like staggered drop-off times, entry screening, physical distancing, wearing mask, and extra cleaning and hand washing would all be very disruptive to the classroom environment. Adding stress to an already stressed operations, all of the new safety guidelines assume students will be compliant with rules, and we know that by nature, children test boundaries. The safety recommendations do not take into account children with behavior disorders whose outbursts sometimes include things like spitting and physical violence that require classroom evacuation to protect the rest of the students. No one knows how we can do things like tornado or an active shooter drills and maintain physical distancing. The operating budget has not magically increased over the summer to properly outfit classrooms for physical distancing and other safety measures. And even if we did have the funding to make it happen, do we have the time to get everything set up before the school year would begin? The staffing issues will be an even bigger challenge than we had prior to the pandemic, given that some teachers, paras, substitute teachers, and other school staff members are likely to opt out of working in the school buildings to protect their health or that of family members. Also, it's hard to have confidence in the federal government under its current leadership. To follow up on its promise to provide continuous and adequate protective safety equipment and cleaning supplies, we will need to keep the school buildings clean and safe. The safety plans in reality conflict, conflict in too many ways to support in-person attendance as the foundation for our education experience this school year. Sending our kids to school at the school buildings isn't an acceptable option because we cannot do it safely, given all the unstable variables. It is in our community's best interest to not contribute to virus outbreaks by forcing in-person school attendance before our pandemic management is under control. We have all the tools we need to get through this hopefully short-lived era by temporarily shifting to virtual school. We have the technology to reach everyone and the talent of the people in our community to put it to use. The Lawrence community has a history of protecting and providing for our most vulnerable citizens by working to make sure everyone has access to food, shelter, and other kinds of support. We will figure out a daycare solution. It is not the responsibility of the school district to be the catch-all safety net for our community. Please use the power we have given you to protect our community from the trauma that will come from the pushing, with pushing the boundaries of safe behavior during pandemic, risking illness, and possibly death of our school staff, students, and their families. The acceptable number of lives to sacrifice is zero. Please keep us safer at home."
I have one last commentary, and then I think Dr. Pittman is, is still with us. So this is from Sarah Podros, Podrasky? She's at the, she's a teacher at Free State, and I apologize if I blurted your name. "In light of the recent increase in COVID-19 infections in Douglas County, I do not think it's wise to go forward with graduation ceremonies at this time. According to Governor Kelly, we should continue, follow the guidelines of Phase Three, and therefore should not hold any gatherings larger than 45 people. Nearly 3,500 new cases of COVID-19 have been reported in Kansas over the past two weeks, which is the steepest rate of the new case development since the pandemic began," said Governor Kelly. "After careful consideration, Secretary Norman's team at KDHE and members of my administration have decided we still do not feel most communities are ready to move into the final phase of the ADASRA plan at this time. It is highly irresponsible and problematic to put our students, families, and staff at unnecessary risk. Thank you for reconsidering the poor timing of this event." And then, Dr. Pittman, are you still with us?
Are you still with us?
Yes, if I am. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Do you have me?
We're ready.
I, okay. I am Dr. Kendra J. Pittman. My pronouns are she, her, hers, and I'm speaking today as both a parent and a scientist. I want to begin by thanking the more than 200 members of local task force for all of their hard work and extra time spent over the summer developing this plan. You have been asked to create a whole new educational environment on very short notice, and I have great confidence that the plan you will propose tonight will be rigorous and meet most students' and families' needs once it is safe to reopen, which leads me to my reason for commenting today. According to the state, we currently have 456 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Douglas County. One month ago, we had less than 80. That is an increase of 570% in one month. And with the free testing for asymptomatic essential workers that was offered last week, you can expect that number to increase dramatically when the results come back in a few days. Our community is in no place to open our brick and mortar schools to children. It is unsafe for children and unsafe for teachers and staff. Under the ADASRA opening plan provided by our governor and adopted by our county, schools are not to open in Phase Three, and at the rate our county is going, we should actually be switched back to Phase Two. Bars have been closed by the county, and restaurants are beginning to close dining rooms on their own accord because they know it's unsafe for their employees nor the community at large. When the governor was stripped of her power by our state legislature that was more concerned with money than lives and futures, the responsibility was given to our counties and their accompanying school districts. Our county adopted the state reopening plan, and I'm asking you to abide by it. Douglas County's smart and safe reopening plan has goals of less than five community transmitted cases of COVID per week. Since just last Friday, we have had 94 cases. Goals for outbreaks is zero per week. We have had at least three outbreaks as of Friday. The goal for active cases is less than 10 active per week, and we have nearly 200 active cases today. We are failing to meet these goals, and in fact, we are nowhere close. Right now, you have a parking lot full of teachers and staff there for their own personal safety, as well as their families and their students and their community. There is actually no way our district can safely open our brick and mortar schools on August 17th and protect students, staff, and teachers. There is no magical bucket of money called the PPE, extra cleaning, and extra staff that we, that would require. We cannot meet the CDC standards. That isn't up for debate. We simply cannot. Our current reality is we have choices to make, and none of the options are good. So we have to find the one that is least painful and most equitable for the widest amount of community members. If we open our physical doors on August 17th, we will have to close them soon after. COVID will end up in our buildings, as it has happened all summer at Boys and Girls book sites. KU students will already be returning, and currently, 20-somethings are the vector of spread. Our members are not going to magically recover before August 17th. That is reality. The mask order was a good first step that won't stop the spread unless mask gatherings, including those at bars, restaurants, and schools, don't occur. We know from watching Europe what needs to be done to safely open, and we are failing as a country. I believe our county can do much better, and we must. Working families are going to bear the brunt of all closures as they scramble for childcare. Do we want them to have to do it over and over and over throughout the school year or just figure out this problem once to begin? Employers will be far more sympathetic to their employees' needs for emergency family leave or significant mental changes if there is no option to attend school in person to begin with. If the option exists, working families will have to take it. They have no choice but to send their children to an unsafe environment and hope they don't get sick. The economic impact on working families, even those with health insurance, will be enormous if they get infected with COVID-19 and need to be hospitalized. And how many folks don't have kids sickly? Even a mild infection can have a huge economic impact. And what happens when teachers and staff start getting sick? Who will teach them? Substitute teachers will be in great shortage this year if there are even any available. Not opening our physical buildings adversely affects our more economically vulnerable community members, and it also causes more harm to children in special education. I have two students with IEPs, and I sit on LCAC. So I personally know the inequities that virtual online school creates, and I think our district can and will do better this time around. But I am willing to keep my kids in health and risk their services being reduced because it's the right thing to do for our community. As a community, we stepped up to keep kids fed and safe during the shutdown this spring, and we can do it again, and we can do it better. This is not an ideal situation, but nothing about 2020 is ideal. We have to do the best with what resources and data we have, and that means not opening our physical schools until we can meet county targets. Opening on August 17th is the absolute worst option. I want to leave you with this reminder that this disease does not discriminate. We can try to protect the adults who are older and have pre-existing health conditions by keeping them out of physical buildings, but everyone is at risk. Our teachers and staff deserve a safe working environment, just like anyone else. They shouldn't have to work in unsafe conditions, and children shouldn't have to be in unsafe schools. Children are often asymptomatic carriers, and they usually don't get very ill, but some do and some die. Yesterday, a school-aged child died from COVID-19 and well-18 handsits. Just that's the point to talk. How many dead children are you willing to run shoulders in order to open our school facilities? How many dead teachers? Are respectfully out when we keep our physical buildings closed and to meet the standards of the CDC and the goals of the county reopening plan? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pittman.
Is that it? Okay. Before Dr. Stubblefield begins, and I hope I'm not stealing any, any of your thunder, first I would say thank you for our patrons that voiced their concerns tonight. Thank you for the emails of, that were sent to me. Your board members are receiving emails, you know, saying, "Don't open." Some emails are saying, "Please open." I will say this, while I definitely appreciate all of the, the input. As superintendent, I share your concerns, and I will say, members of our executive leadership team, I don't want to speak for them, but I would tell you that they share your concerns as a parent of four that will have to potentially enter those walls. I share your concern as a parent. But one of the things that I really appreciate about this community, and it's been shown and proven time and time again, although these are unprecedented times, I've seen this community come together in a way to meet the needs of, of our scholars, to meet the needs of our, our staff. And I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, and this is just not, just words that are coming out of my mouth. Nothing is more important than the safety and well-being of our students and staff. No decision that we make during this process is going to be a popular decision. However, we, I, I know we can come together. You've heard me say it before. The answers are in the room, and I know we can come together to make sure that we are creating a plan that will benefit our scholars while keeping them safe and benefit our staff while, while keeping them, them safe. I appreciate the district administration staff and our Lawrence Education Association and their collaboration. Did my mic? Their collaboration to create this task force, returning, sorry, Together Again. Uh, is the work from their discussions around fall planning. School administrators, curriculum instruction, coaches, classified staff, teachers, representing various grade levels have all been a part of this, this work group. And so this is just an overview of the work done so far, because keep in mind, we get the final guidance from the State Department on, on next week. Once we do have a plan, it will be comprehensive in nature and incorporate guidance. It has to, it must incorporate guidance from national, state, and local experts. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Stubble.
Thank you. Patrick Kelly is actually going to share the presentation, and he's navigating from home. And again, I echo the sentiments of Dr. Lewis, that our main priority is the safety of our staff and our students and our community. And I just want to acknowledge that this group, in which we'll talk about the timeline, tonight, we're sharing an update. There are no, no decisions have been made on what school will look like on August 17th. We are still gathering data from both our staff, who we'll talk about the questions that they were asked in the survey, as well as our parents. And in no way do we want to create an environment where it's pitting teachers versus parents or that kind of thing. So we are... So we are in constant communication with the Health Department. Every step that we have looked at in this plan, even for the things that are happening, like graduation, our conditioning programs, we have not done anything without getting guidance from the Health Department, and we have shifted and pivoted those activities as well this summer because, based off the information from the Health Department. We do acknowledge that when this survey was sent out, when we talked about the different phases, that things were a lot different in Douglas County. And we recognize, as we're moving forward in these conversations and as we're talking about what's happening within the task force and the working groups, we have had to pivot, and this whole year will be a pivot. If we start virtually, if we start in some modified schedule, we will constantly be pivoting. And we ask that the community and our teachers continue to work with us, give us your authentic feedback. But I just want to clear up the misunderstanding that we have emphatically said that every student will be back in brick-and-mortar on August 17th. We have not. We have said there is a possibility that there could be a brick-and-mortar option on August 17th, but we've never said that it'll be every student, and here's your decision. The data that we'll talk about, and then I'll be quiet and turn it over to Patrick, because some of this stuff you'll hear in the presentation. We needed to know the preferences of both our families and our staff, so we can know how we're planning and what to plan for. We didn't want to make assumptions about and just say, "Here are your options." We needed to make informed decisions, and the first step was to collect the data to see what the preference is, regardless of if there's 14, no new cases in 14 days. We know there are families who have shared with us that they still, for this school year, want 100% remote learning. So we needed to get a count around that. We also needed to know what our staff preferences were, what is their level of comfortability in being in the schools, and we have to take all of that into account. So tonight, we're just giving an update, and there are a lot of questions that have been asked that we don't have the answers to, and we're still navigating. But we'll provide as much information and continue to gather the questions that you have and continue to work within the working groups, prioritizing the safety of our staff and our students and working in conjunction with our local Health Department. So I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm going to switch out, switch to present mode, so maybe these slides will be a little bit bigger, a little bit easier to see. I'm Patrick Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction. Including Anna, also tonight, you'll be hearing from Darcy Kraus, our Director of Elementary Ed, Rick Henry, our Director of Secondary Ed, Director of HR, Samrye Devon, Assistant Director of Special Education, Laura Basham. And I think I hit everybody. We thought probably the best thing for the board and the public listening would be to take you through a little bit of a timeline. This is a rapidly changing, evolving situation, and we thought it might be helpful to just have some background on where we've been and where we're going. As some of you all know, that on March 17th, Governor Kelly closed schools for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year. And a couple of days after that, we received from the Kansas Department of Ed a continuing learning guidance. We continued to make sure that we supported continuous learning throughout April. And then, April 20th, we sent out a continuous learning survey to USP497 families. On May 4th, Governor Laura Kelly presented her Ad-Ask-For plan to reopen Kansas. And then, early May, we started working with LEA to gather staff recommendations for task force meetings. On May 19th, the Center for Disease Control released guidelines for reopening schools. We've heard that referenced in some of the public comment. Our Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Fund are the first part of our CARES Act fund, which totaled 1.4 million, was awarded in May, on May 20th. So that allowed us to start putting together some task forces and working groups. And we used those CDC guidelines to establish the responsibilities for each task force and working group. We took those headers of promoting behaviors that reduce spread, maintaining healthy environments, maintaining healthy operations, and preparing for when staff or students get sick. And we broke them out into categories. I'll go over those a little bit further later in the presentation. We also added some information, having looked at some early state plans from other states, and we added a section on providing continuous teaching and learning. In late May, we asked 150-plus staff members to serve on a task force or curriculum working group. This, these working groups and task forces were created in partnership with the Lawrence Education Association. These groups, you can see here how they're organized. We have a Facility Operations and Safety Task Force that's headed by Samrye Devon. Laura Basham heads our Pre-K Group. Darcy Kraus, our Elementary Group. And within that Elementary Group, you're going to see a group around K2, a group around 3-5, specials. And within every one of these groups, you have a social and emotional learning group and a special populations group. Those groups are meeting separately and also meeting individual, meeting with, they have membership on some of the K2 teams, the 3-5 teams. We really felt strongly that social emotional learning was a big part of everything we do in this challenge, and that we also needed to recognize that our special populations. And when we talk special populations, it's special education, it's ELL, it's our homeless population. We really wanted to be thoughtful about that and make sure that the decisions that we were making were being influenced by the thoughts of those teachers. At the middle level, Rick Henry is doing some great leadership there. You can see the different subject areas, and again, the social emotional learning and special populations. And then Rick's also working with our high school team and looking at those areas as well. Those groups are all listed on our Working Together website, and you can see the many, many teachers. Every school is represented. We really have a large group of teachers, a large group of administrators, really helping with this work, helping guide the decisions that we're considering. On June 1st, KSDE released their very first draft of what they call Navigating Change. It's a competency-based curriculum document that's different than our current standards document. Competencies are things that people, that students can achieve.
Usually based on a rubric, and it's a different way of teaching. There's some excitement there, but it does require, as Anna says, a pivot in the way that we instruct and the way that we assess. Our curriculum groups began meeting in early June. Their work was broken into two-week segments. Part of it was waiting on KSDE to release more documents and also building our capacity. We knew we had to meet with our teachers early on and hear their concerns, hear what we learned from continuous learning. What could we take away that went well? We know that there were things that didn't go so well, but we also thought that we could learn some, we could have some learnings from that time. How could we also find out what resources were out there? There was some really great teaching going on, and we wanted to take advantage of that. On June 8th, our family, we sent out the Return to Learn survey to families. And on June 15th, our Together Again website went live. In mid-June, the task force and working groups reviewed the results of those surveys, and I've shared with you just sort of some of that information here. Now, this was as of mid-June. Things can change. In mid-June, of the 4,927 parents who responded, 71 said that they felt that schools may look different when they reopen in the fall to comply with health and safety recommendations, and that they plan to send their kids to school. You can see here, the question is based on the safety needs and your comfort level or any other needs or preferences. Rank the following options for school in the fall, one most preferred. When thinking about your child returning to school, please respond to the following statements. I know where I can go to get information or recommended health and safety guidelines. I believe my school district will be able to adequately implement the health and safety guidelines provided by health officials. My child is eager to return to school, and my child misses extracurricular activities. The bright-colored blue is strongly agree, then agree, then disagree, and then strongly disagree. When thinking about your child returning to school, respond to the following statements. I'm concerned about access to childcare if school does not reopen in the fall, or I choose not to send my child to school. I can balance my child's school obligations with my personal and work responsibility. I am concerned about the effects of social distancing on my child, and I am concerned about my child's health and safety upon returning to school. On June 19th, Douglas County extended Phase 3. On July 1st, it was decided to send out another survey for remote learning options and a survey to classified staff and certified staff. July 2nd, we extended Phase 3. And on July 9th, Navigating Change, the third draft of the competency-based learning and school safety operations was released to superintendents. Tonight, we are meeting with you to give you this update. So here's what you're going to get tonight. You're going to get an overview of the task force and working responsibilities. You're going to get an update from each one of our task forces, starting with Facilities, Operations, and Safety, then Elementary, then Secondary, then Pre-K and Early Childhood, our Curriculum and Instruction and Work Groups. You'll hear from the Lawrence Education Association, and we'll give you some survey results of the most recent surveys to date. Let's start with the responsibilities. And I covered the headers of this, but I thought I'd go over each one in a little more detail. These are all, again, based on the CDC guidelines for considerations for school. Within the Facilities and Operations Task Force, they're working on promoting behaviors that reduce spread, so staying home when appropriate, and hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cloth face coverings, adequate supplies, signs and messages. They're also working on maintaining healthy environments, so cleaning and disinfecting, shared objects, ventilation, water systems, modified layouts, physical barriers and guides, communal spaces and food service. Maintaining healthy operations, which includes protections for staff at high risk for severe illness from COVID-19, regulatory awareness, leave and time off, policies and excused absence policies, backup staffing plan, staff training, recognizing signs and symptoms, sharing facilities, gatherings, and field trips, and preparing for when someone gets sick, advising staff and families of sick students, isolation criteria, isolate and transport those who are sick, clean and disinfectant, notify health officials and close contacts. Each of our task forces, at the Pre-K level, the Elementary Task Force and the Middle School Task Force are working on maintaining healthy operations, which includes protecting children at high risk for severe illness from COVID-19, gatherings and field trips, identifying small groups, keeping them together, or what we call cohorting, staggered schedule, and support for coping and resilience. Those task forces are also working on providing consistent teaching and learning, which includes full-time remote learning, curricular goals, scheduled remote learning curricular goals, grading and promotion, support for students not effectively engaged in remote learning. Our Curriculum Instruction working groups are working on providing consistent teaching and learning, which includes full-time remote learning curricular goals, scheduled learning curricular goals, online lessons, instructional resource, offline lessons, instructional resources, online lessons, delivery resource, offline lessons, delivery resources, support for students not effectively engaged in remote learning, opportunities to enrich exercise and play, foundational wellness and readiness, assessment and professional development, and staff training. Just as a side note, our Pre-K group has some other specific things that are worked for Pre-K and Early Childhood, including social distancing strategies, parent drop-off and pickup, screening children upon arrival, cleaning and disinfecting, healthy hand hygiene behavior, food preparation and meal service, vulnerable risk groups, early learning standards, and social emotional learning. There is separate guidance from the CDC for Early Childhood and Pre-K, and we wanted to make sure that we considered those important factors. That sort of gets you to where we are tonight. As part of our presentation, I'm going to invite Samrye Devon to visit about Facilities, Operations, and Safety, and sort of some of their thinking at this point.
Hey, well, good evening, and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share with you and just update you where the work we are currently with our task force. I'm just going to jump right in. Right now, we're looking at promoting operations and reducing the spread. We will absolutely follow the federal, state, and local guidelines regarding when staff and students need to stay home and not come to school. We will also follow the same guidelines for return to work. We will work in collaboration with the local Health Department in all cases. Hand hygiene is very important, so hand hygiene procedures will be followed, and a schedule of routine hand washing will be implemented. Hand sanitations may occur with soap and water, or use of school or personal hand sanitizer. Hand sanitizer should at least contain 60% alcohol. Hand sanitizer stations will be available in multiple locations throughout the school for frequent use. So right now, we are evaluating, working with our nurses, working with our admin assistants on the team and such, as where is the best placement for those sanitation, do a sanitizer station. Cloth coverings are huge. So Douglas County issued a health order on July 1st requiring most people to wear masks. We will be requiring staff, students, and visitors to wear masks. There are some exceptions to not wearing a mask that the CDC has identified, and those will be listed in our final document. Masks will be provided to all staff and students. The wearing of masks will assist with prevention of transmission of illness if present. Plastic shields will also be provided to all staff, and clear masks will be provided to those who will be needed where educating is unable to be performed using a mask. So for example, our speech and language sessions. Itinerant staff. Suzie Green, our Early Childhood Coordinator, was also present on the task force, and she visited with us about the KSDE guidelines for home visits. So those will also be used when our staff goes out there, especially our Early Childhood staff for home visits. So Slide 2. Maintaining healthy environments. Tony Baron, our Executive Director of Facilities and Operations, and Colin Neal, Supervisor of Custodians, were both present during the task force meetings and provided information on the proper way to clean and disinfect. We will have training for all staff in August on how to keep areas clean. We will provide cleaning materials for each classroom that will include cleaner, a disinfectant, cleaning cloths, and gloves. Sorry about that. Tony, is there anything that you would like to share about our cleaning and disinfection at this time? Cleaning and disinfecting?
Yeah, thank you, Samrye. Since 2013, we have been meeting with our custodians on how we can basically develop a program and procedures for cleaning methods. We clean for health, and we've been doing that since that time. So our goal is to refine those. We've been fortunate that the Board of Education has taken the initiative to invest in the capital for the Tersono stabilized Alquias ozone machines that we use, which are a great asset to us right now. So we have a handful of cleaners we'll be using, and we're going to continue to develop that plan, as Samrye said, and share that out when we get our final details put together. Thank you, Samrye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, shared objects. Share objects was an important topic to our task force. We will follow CDC guidelines of not sharing objects and supplies and items. If instance, does arise where it's not feasible, then an object is shared, then disinfection will be done after each individual use. Each student will have their own school supplies. Community supplies will be eliminated in the classrooms, and each student will also have a separate area for their belongings. We will work with We will work with each building principal to make sure that happens, whether they use totes and some use cubbies. It's our understanding, some of the teachers on our committee said some students are currently sharing cubbies, so we'll make sure that does not happen. Modified layouts. This is a big one. So to increase the space, we must remove unnecessary materials and furniture from the classrooms, new placement of desks and chairs and workspaces and et cetera to allow students and cohorts with social distancing. Those will be developed. Limited or restrict use of common spaces, such things as lockers. That's going to be a conversation. Lockers are considered those high-touch areas. So students, and just things like, our committee thought about, students should have assigned seating in the classroom to follow, just to keep that cohort of students together. And outdoor spaces should be used as much as possible. Again, we are also going to remove any hard-to-sanitize items from the classroom which are not essential to instruction. Each building administrator and leadership team will design modifications for student and staff traffic flow and hallway patterns within the schools. Student dismissal from classroom and transition periods will be staggered when possible to assist with congestion and cross-traffic. So those are some of the things that, to maximize that physical distancing with students that we have so far to share. So slide three. We are currently investigating installing the physical barriers, the plexiglass, in areas where physical distancing may be difficult. That might be in the office areas, in some of our speech classrooms, so places like that. The district will provide all the guides and signage to remind and inform staff and students of six feet distancing. The signage and visual cues will also be hung throughout all buildings on social distancing. We'll have signage on healthy habits, symptoms of COVID-19, just all of those reminders, and it will be consistent across our district. And Tony can also speak to our new HVAC system that exceeds ventilation to see if you have any. So Tony, you want to visit with that?
Yeah, sure. We, since the 2013 bond and the current 2017 bond, we have replaced several of our HVAC systems. And all of our systems since 1973 have gone by the ASHRAE 62 standards. And so that's, it's just a simple way of saying that we have developed to a standard. And one of the beauties of it is, being in Lawrence, Kansas, the community, as Dr. Lewis had said earlier, there's a high standard for the learning environment. One of the things that we took into consideration during the design process was indoor air quality. At that time, it was more for the cognitive development of our students and staff. You know, getting CO2 out of the room with fresh air was a major concern. And there are studies out there that show that the more fresh air you have, the better learning environment you have for our students, and which affects our staff also. So that's been a plus, that's something that we have developed over the past seven to eight years. And also with our current construction project at Lawrence High, one of our goals was to exceed the ASHRAE 62 standards by twenty percent. So that's something that's always improving. I kind of relate it to vehicles today, you know? A vehicle on the road is getting better every year, and I equate that to our HVAC systems. Every time we do a project, there's something new and better out there that we do our best to take advantage of while trying to balance our budget with all the needs and the competing interests that we have within our district. So we also are going to take a look at some of our spaces. Smaller spaces sometimes are just a little bit more difficult to ventilate, and they fluctuate a lot more than our larger spaces. So as we get, if we get reports of the small areas needing some better ventilation, we'll definitely take a look into those also, and have to evaluate those on a case-by-case basis.
Thank you, Tony. That was a concern with some of our task force members, was the small spaces. So we will need to evaluate them. Next slide. So maintaining healthy environments, communal spaces, we'll look at those. Procedures for safety precautions for communal spaces. Consider, again, not using lockers due to the high-touch point area, and because those are places where students like to gather. All large group assemblies will be avoided, and building principals will look to alternate ways to be able to share that information. So food service. Food service. So plans continue to be refined and finalized for food service. Polymer shared, and the majority of the student meals will be pre-wrapped and prepackaged. The use of classroom and other spaces may be necessary for food service, so we're looking at those. Principals will work with staff. We will probably need to increase time between lunch shifts to accommodate or increase required time during the lunch process. And Polymer is also looking at point of cells because that will look different at various locations. So. Slide five. We are basically limiting all nonessential visitors into the building, so this will definitely be a change. Because in Lawrence, we really like that community school. We like to have volunteers and such in our schools. Procedures will be developed by schools for drop-off and pickup without caregivers and parents coming into the buildings. Family meetings and conferences will all be done virtually, and face coverings are required for all visitors, and lunch guests will be prohibited. Extracurricular activities. Committee assigned to fine arts, library, and physical education. They have been extremely hard at work developing guidelines for the sources listed on, from the sources listed on this slide. I know Denise Johnson has been working with the fine arts and the physical education teachers, and those documents will be shared. They're almost ready. Following guidelines from KESHA and federal, state, and local guidelines. Coaches and sponsors will be required to provide written plans to their athletic and activity building administrators regarding how their activity and sport will definitely adhere to safety guidelines. And Ron May shared that they are working with some of those guidelines, right? They are working with the guidelines this summer, too. Water systems. So it is very important for students to have access to water throughout the school day. We know how important hydration is. The water fountains will be shut off due to the fountains being a high risk of transmission of viruses. Students will bring water bottles from home. If they don't have water bottles, of course, we will provide those for them. And the majority of our fountains are already filling stations, already have the bottle fillers on there. And if not, we will turn them into a filling station. So looking at our water systems right now. Recognizing signs and symptoms. We are finalizing the specifics of how staff members will be screened prior to the beginning of each day, so we're working on that. Our local health department did not recommend taking temperatures of students daily because of the cause of potential crowding of lines and the way of entering the schools, as it is just a moment in time. But again, we are just finalizing those specifics. All staff will be provided with education and information on the symptoms of COVID-19 in students, so that appropriate and timely recognition will take place if a student develops symptoms during the days. We will also be providing families that information. Next slide. Maintaining healthy operations. So protections are in place to reduce spread. So guidelines from CDC will be used and will continue to be updated. We will continue education around general health and safety guidelines, like washing hands for twenty seconds, maintaining six feet when feasible, covering the coughs and the sneezes, cleaning disinfected, frequent touched areas every hour, the doorknobs, the light switches, places like that. We will also have staff training. So professional development will be provided to all staff in August on healthy habits, hygiene, cleaning, and disinfecting, and other safety district procedures. I know Tony and Colin are currently working with Purezone to be able to provide some of that PD for us. So I have been in close communications with Morgan Hunter, and that is essential. So we will also be, we're kind of working back and forth. Of course, the substitutes are looking to see what our reopening plans or whether district reopening plans are looking like. But we will provide all substitutes to follow our district guidelines and procedures. So slides up. Extremely important that each school have a safe space separate from the nurse's office to care for those who have symptoms of COVID-19. So only essential designated staff will be allowed into this room. Also, a separate identified space in each building for students with special care needs, and that would be students with a feeding tube, inhaler, and things like that. So it's important that they have a space, too. Emergency contact lists will be crucial for families to keep updated. Staff and employees exhibiting symptoms of COVID-19 without other obvious explanations are prohibited from coming to school. And if they come to school, they will be isolated and sent home immediately. So notifying our officials. We will be in accordance with state and local laws and regulations. The district will notify local health officials, staff, and families immediately if any COVID-19 cases, while maintaining confidentiality and assurance with ADA. We will also assist in the contact tracing process with the local health department, and their process will guide, in that process will guide any decisions of exclusions and building closures. We will work with our local health department to assess for close contacts with students and staff, and inform those who have been exposed to follow the guidelines set forth. So again, this is the work that we have in progress, our conversations and such. The next steps will be, definitely, our task force team will be ongoing, and we're going to reconvene when KSD approves the navigating change guide and any new information from the CDC guidelines, and review those documents to see what is missing and what needs to be updated included. We have a subcommittee of nurses currently that is working on health room procedures and other important procedures, and we'll be sharing that information with our task force. And Ron May will be meeting with first student this week in regards to transportation recommendations.
So I just want to interject here and say, we have to plan for if we were in school. Sharing this out does not mean we will be in school on August seventeenth, but we have to plan for every phase. So I know people may have been listening to this and said, they're not hearing us. We are, we hear you, we're listening, and we're working with the health department. But we have to plan because at whatever point that we'll return, we know it won't be like it was before, and we have to have these things in place. So please don't walk away saying they had all these plans, we're going to be at school. So I'm going to step out the way and let Darcy talk, but I did just want to be clear about, we have to have plans for every possible phase.
So I'm noticing that the presentation is quite long. And so at some point, I do want to make sure that we have a break so that board members stay engaged. But the other thing I wanted to ask is, when you say that these plans are, so that for folks that are listening to this, because it's a little bit longer, what is the timeline for when you would have to make a decision? I know you and Dr. Lewis talked about it earlier, but when will you all decide? You're telling us, like, this is what will happen if we go back to the building. When can parents expect to know?
So we have a scheduled meeting with the health department on July twenty-third to review all of these things. And the health department is constantly looking at our cases. So our hope, I think, is in there. And then with the survey, some of this we will cover. Although the surveys close on July seventeenth. Once we reassess and know, like, we, at the next board meeting, we'll share what schedules would be if we were in different variations. So by August first, we are hoping to know something. But honestly, it really, as we work with the health department and what the state and federal are saying, we'll know some at that point probably firmly. Right now, in Phase Three, and what we are doing with our athletics and conditioning, they're not inside. So if school was starting tomorrow, we probably wouldn't be in the school building because we haven't even moved those programs inside. But that's based off the data that, I mean, we would not have all of our students coming back. So those are some of the things. It's just hard to say, but I'm thinking August first or the first week of August.
Or right before. One of the things that we wanted to be intentional about was, first of all, allowing parents the opportunity to get some information because from our early survey, there were a large percent that were unsure. And they were probably unsure because they didn't know what to expect or what it would look like. We must go through the state recommendations that will be approved next Thursday. I will say the draft is one thousand seventy-eight pages long. And so obviously, I won't look at, well, we'll look at a lot of them, but they're designed and organized in a way that I can take, for example, the health section and give it to staff that's dealing with health. I can take food services part and give it to food services. So we will follow those guidelines. And like I said, we must and will follow the state and local health department guidelines. That's why we wanted to schedule a meeting with our health officials after we get the guidelines from the state. And I will say, our health officer, Dr. Thomas Marcelino, was on a call with the superintendents last Thursday with Wendy Rodson.
Yeah, I have a question. This is Carol Cadeau Blackwood. What is the projected extra financial cost for this? Because I heard sanitizer, salt, masks, totes, extra food wrapping. And we haven't even looked at extra buses for athletics because I know we have a large team. We have to transport those, the band members. What is the expected extra cost?
Well, I don't know the exact figure. I will say, we received some CARES Act funds that are purposely designed for things like that, hand sanitizers, PPE, anything that is a direct result of COVID-19, which is obviously what we're going through now. We're also working with Douglas County. Talk a little bit about that. Douglas County received a good little chunk of money from CARES Act, and they are definitely partnering with us to potentially use some of those funds to meet our needs as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Get up my slide. And I am Darcy Kraus, and I am the elementary director. And I have had the privilege of working with an incredible group of both innovative and committed teacher leaders and administrators over the course of about the last five weeks. The heavy lifting has definitely occurred within our K-two and three, five work groups, our six subcommittees, and our administrative leadership team that has met before and after each meeting to ensure that our goals are aligned and that we are talking and planning off of the same documents so that we can coalesce all the feedback from the teachers and come back with a meaningful work document at the end of that. We understood that our first priority was definitely to give guidance around impactful and instructional practices. So our work groups went to task at looking at the logistics that surrounded both the remote learning environment as well as the brick-and-mortar learning environment. And then we further articulated that guidance around those common structures that you will see in a typical elementary classroom every day, such as whole group instruction, small group instruction. And then we embedded all of that within the constructs of our instructional framework. We threw in a very heavy dose of social emotional learning because we realized that that will be integral every day for our students regardless of the learning environment that they are in. Whether we are in Phase Three or Phase Four, we are definitely focused on high-quality instruction, student engagement. Currently, our parents have been given the choice of whether they would like their students to attend brick-and-mortar or whether they would like to have them engage in our online learning environment. And those are the two constructs that we are working on currently. They are basing that decision on what is best for their child and also what is best for their individual family dynamics. Attending school in our brick-and-mortar setting this year, if that is what they choose, will be eerily similar to our pre-pandemic school. We will be focusing on social emotional learning, targeting those relevant topics, those current events that will impact our students. We will have a cohesive curriculum with targeted instruction that is designed to have mastery of the standards. And of course, that assessment component, which will allow us to provide the interventions and the enhancements to both support and challenge our students. We recognize the scope, quite frankly, of the new learning for our staff. And so we have challenged our teacher leaders with prioritizing. have challenged our teacher leaders with prioritizing the professional development topics they feel will best benefit them and impact our students. And we are moving forward with those plans for our beginning of the year sessions as we march into that 2021 school year. There's a lot of work that has been done, there's a lot more to do, but I could not be working with a more committed team, and I'm sure we'll get there.
Well, good evening. You've heard a lot tonight. Good job hanging in there. We'll try to give you a little bit more here. Like Darcy, well, first of all, I'm Rick Henry, Director of Secondary Schools. It's good to be in front of you this evening, giving you an update. Like Darcy, I've been honored to work with a great group of people, very committed administrators, teachers. We've tapped into some student knowledge as well, district level people. It's been a lot of work, but I'm honored to have worked with a great group. Middle school and high school task forces that I'm facilitating, we are developing in-person and remote schedules based on family input, as well as providing choice regarding where students learn. We're building these schedules, keeping in mind that we need to create systems that are as safe as possible. These task forces are also developing logistical processes specific to buildings, which follow the safety guidelines and protocols that Sam shared with you just a bit earlier from the Facilities Operations and Safety Task Force. We're also working in tandem with content area work groups who have been diligently meeting. Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction, Patrick Kelly, will provide more information about these work groups later in this presentation. I would like to say, at this time, though, there's overlap of membership within our middle school and high school task forces and the content area working groups, which has been great because it's allowed the two different entities to really inform each other's work, and I think it's made us stronger and more aware of the needs of our staff and students. As in elementary, there's been a strong focus on social emotional learning. Along with safety, we realize that social emotional learning has to be at the forefront of all that we do, because our students and staff need this support to be successful, not just successful, but to be safe and to be all that they can be. Our middle school and high school social emotional work groups are addressing social emotional needs, and the supports they develop will be integrated into instruction and processes. Also, like elementary, we have challenged teachers, other staff members, to prioritize professional development. We know that the learning curve is going to be large, it's going to be a difficult one, and we're ready to take on this challenge, but we need those priorities, right? We need to be able to know what is at the top of the list in terms of what our staff needs to successfully navigate the coming days. The, well, I just wanted to, the last thing I wanted to say was, I wanted to say thank you for approving the movement of the January 4 PD Day to the beginning of the school year. We're really going to need that time, and that's a good step in providing the time. So we are ready with next steps.
So we obviously had our initial steps were to focus on what we had control over, right? And with the onset of some additional guidance from both our state and local entities, we're ready to pivot now, talking about curriculum and assessment, that scope and sequencing to make sure that whether we're in brick and mortar or whether we're in remote learning, that those items line up and we're able to transition back and forth. We're also getting ready to talk about schedules that will allow for the provisions that we need for social distancing, and we are going to be streamlining our communications. Tomorrow, I'm working with a principal group, we have a four-hour work block that they actually suggested, and we are going to be talking about a unified platform that will be across all 14 elementary schools. Pre-K, I believe, is even going to tag on to us, and it will allow common landing pages for parents, and then they will be able to link from there all of the various resources that their students need access to.
Along with those things, we are working to finalize elementary school, middle school, and high school schedules for the July 27th Board of Education meeting, so we should be able to share more specific information with you on that date. In addition, as I just mentioned, professional development planning is being put into high gear right now. We're taking those suggestions from our staff members, and we're going to put those suggestions into action and really try to provide the PD that they need to start the school year successfully.
Before we move to the next slide, can we ask some questions before we move to pre-K about the secondary and elementary steps? Is that agreeable with everybody?
Yes.
So does anyone have questions to start? Oh, does anyone have questions to start?
I wanted to know, oh gosh, as far as the high school, I know they said, you know, trying to keep the same group within, you know, to eliminate the kind of crossing over. Has there been any plans with that as far as, you know, like, do we look at the schedules and see if schedules are similar?
Well, we're trying to, one thing we're trying to do is reduce transitions, so the schedule that we're, it's really difficult to put middle school and high school students into cohort groups without tracking those students. So we're working really hard to reduce transitions, which, one thing that we're looking at is possible block scheduling so that we have fewer movement times throughout the day. We also, I mean, there are some other things that we're looking at, too. Perhaps not all of our students will be at school on the same day, so we're trying to reduce the number of interactions between students and staff members as well. I don't know if that answers your question, but, okay.
Answers it as best as she can at this time.
Other questions?
Kelly, this is Shannon, I have a question. Okay, so I think I'm trying to understand what was the information-
We just heard about planning for instruction and reconcile that with what we heard at the beginning of the presentation about where we are in terms of what options we're offering to our families and to our staff in terms of what school looks like. Because when, and bear with me for a sec, at the beginning, when we were going through this, it sounded to me like we hadn't really made decisions and that there might be options that are, we might be going 100% virtual, we might be doing some combination of virtual and in-the-building instruction, or we might have students who are doing all in-the-building instruction. But, you know, I think in the way that parents and people in the community think about this, what I just heard you all describe was, either we're doing virtual or we're doing in the building. And I think what maybe has people unsettled is that it feels like in that discussion of instruction, we are missing a, an option where we might have some sort of hybrid learning plan. And so I guess I would just like some clarification about whether what people in the community would think of as a hybrid learning plan is really still on the table.
This is Darcy. Yes, it definitely is. What we focused on first was what was within our locus of control and what we had guidance about. We knew, one way or the other, we had to develop plans for both brick and mortar and remote learning. Now that we have that guidance from KSDE and more discrete guidance from the Douglas County Health Department, now we're going to work on the hybrid model that we talked about. That will hopefully, it will be congruent with our secondary as much as we possibly can for ease on parents. But quite frankly, right now, our most valuable resource is time, and so we kind of got the low-hanging fruit, if you will, out of the way initially, and now, like, next week for elementary, we are going to work on what that plan would look like if we had some of our students, as Rick mentioned, in brick and mortar part of the time, some of them on another day, and that remote brick and mortar learning combination. So you're right, we didn't talk about it tonight because we have not discussed it in our work groups for the reasons that I stated. Does that help?
It does. I think one of the-
Reasons why the board and administration has been receiving so much feedback from the community on these questions is that up to now, the communication about that has been unclear. You know, I, as a parent, based on the communications I had received, was under the impression that, you know, that that kind of hybrid learning option where we might have, we might be able to legitimately reduce class sizes and actually have social distancing while some, while kids are in the buildings, was really not something that was being discussed. I, I'm reassured that we do still have that on the table, and we are looking at that, but I'll just say that I think one of the reasons parents are feeling, what, staff as well, are feeling a lot of anxiety is that our prior communications have made it sound like we weren't going to go that direction.
Shannon, I think-
To your point and for clarification, we are trying, what we were trying to establish, but maybe we didn't communicate, well, obviously, we didn't communicate it clearly, we know for certain, there are parents, I don't care what version, what phase we're in, there are students they don't want in the building. So we were trying to get an accurate account of those who we know we don't have to include in the planning. The brick and mortar option, whether it's hybrid or if we're in Phase 4 and everybody can be back, then we can plan for those, too. Now, I don't want to confuse, because we haven't talked about it, is, for what we haven't discussed is, if it even is possible, even if we're in Phase 4, if you, as a parent, say, "Well, I want to continue this hybrid option." We have not discussed that, but we're trying to align the options with the phases and the guidance, and we did the two extreme, because if you are planning for brick and mortar, it could be smaller numbers where you can do the social distancing, and if all goes well, then everyone is back. So we are, those nuances, we're trying to have clarity around, and then if we ever get to the point where all students are back, we can wrap back around in case there's, or explore options or start to explore options where if we are in Phase 4 and there's a parent who say, "Well, I really like that my child is going every other day." We have not explored that, it doesn't mean that we won't, but we have to get the bigger blocks in place before we can start to discuss, like, "I want two days a week or three days a week," if that makes sense.
So in Kansas, the, oh, go ahead, Shannon.
I was just saying, to say in follow-up, Dr. Stubblefield, I really appreciate that. I will just say that when I filled out the parent survey on June 15th, if you asked me to fill out that survey today, every answer that I give you would be completely different based on the changes in what has happened in our community over the last half weeks. And I, and I recognize that you all, you know, you're doing the best you can with the information that you have, and that the information keeps changing, but, you know, I would, a month ago, I would have said, "Yeah, I might be comfortable having my kids back in the buildings in some form or fashion," and I am in a place right now where I really don't know if that's even going to be feasible for them. So I guess I just, I just wanted to express that particular perspective on the data that you've collected from parents, because I think that I'm not the only one who feels like they would have not answered those questions the same way. And so, you know, you've got data that you're trying to plan around, but I think that if you ask those questions today, your data would look very, very different.
Which is why we-
Are saying, you know, July 17th, we'll close it, and then between July 17th and August 1st, we'll ask parents again, because we know the information is constantly changing, and they can say, "If it's brick and mortar, if it's safe, I want my student, if not, I want 100% remote." So we'll wrap back around again.
And when you, when you come back to parents the next time, because part of the, one of the things that I heard, and we all did in several emails, was, "I would have said X, but I just didn't have enough information to make the decision," or, "It was hard for me, I wanted to do online, but I didn't know what they meant with..." So with the next time you're asking parents and engaging with them, you'll have, they'll have way more information to be able to provide you feedback and-
Yeah, we should have schedules and what we're doing with the 100% remote, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so just as a natural stopping place, I just want to take five minutes and come back. That would be at 8:45, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm hoping everybody is back and able to take advantage of a couple-minute break, or re-energized and recharged, ready to go. This is Laura Basham, and I am the Director of Student Services and Early Childhood. I have been working with our pre-K and early childhood group as we are moving forward with the, with the big undertaking this summer. Not only in early childhood are we planning for what instruction might look like in person and all of the provisions that we need to account for with the restrictions and healthy habits for in-person services, we're also thinking about what remote learning could look like in early childhood. We also have the added bonus of not just thinking about our traditional services, but in early childhood, we have our traditional pre-K or our readiness for four-year-old program. We also provide special education services. Some of those students do come into our classrooms, and so they are in classrooms, they are in our school buildings. We also have many students that we provide services to either by appointment and/or in the community. So, as we think about those settings, there's a different nuance that we really need to consider. Again, health and safety is of utmost importance, and we are really thinking about, if we're in the community, going into different daycares, what that would look like, what safety precautions are daycares looking at and putting in place, and then also, what we need to be doing if it is deemed appropriate to be providing services in the community. And that's for our three, four, and five-year-olds. We also have our early intervention program, and that is our zero-to-three-year-olds, and through Parents as Teachers, and then our special education services in Tiny K. Those services are primarily home-based. And so, pre-pandemic, we have our visitors, our home visitors and our service providers going into families' homes. Once we were, that stopped in March, and we have not returned to going into families' homes, we actually have been providing services all summer because that is a year-round program. And so, we're, we're looking at what we need to be doing with, with that. Right now, we are looking for the guidance from KDHE, we will be following that guidance. We have had many successes of virtual visits with families, we have lots of lessons learned, we are going to continue to build on that. So, there are some, just some different dynamics as we think and plan for early childhood. One of the main factors also is we really wanted to align with elementary, the schedule for elementary, and lean into some of their structures as much as we can, as much as it's appropriate. We realize that families need consistency, and that's a big, a big focus. We're also going to be working, we are working, and we're going to continue working with some of our local early childhood groups and our daycare centers. We do have a couple centers that are up, that are running, they've kind of already been able to figure out some, some lessons learned, and we, we don't want to recreate the wheel. So, we're going to be working with those local groups and daycares to help us with some of our, our next steps in moving forward. And then also, if we think about social, emotional learning, that is huge. Our children, if they're coming back or when they're coming back into the building, we need to realize that socially, emotionally, they, they will need support. Our teachers will need support in supporting our students and our families as well. So, as we focus on early learning standards and our learning outcomes and competencies for early childhood, we definitely will have that anchored in our social, emotional learning as well. So, as we think about next steps for early childhood, right now, we are awaiting the public release of the Navigating Change information. We're looking at identifying strategies for in-person services. I know Sam Ray and her team have done great work, and so, we're eager to be able to start moving forward about, "Okay, what does this look like for a three-year-old? How do we social distance? How do we use physical barriers? How do we use visuals?" All of those things as strategies. We're also looking at identifying effective and engaging instruction. Of course, we always want effective, engaging instruction. We want that when students, when we're in person, we also want to be able to do that remotely. We have the unique opportunity to really stretch our brains and think out of the box about how do we effectively engage a three-year-old remotely? A lot of that is going to come with exposure with students, teaching routines, and then also supporting the families, and really supporting the families through coaching. I did touch on the, our focus of our social, emotional learning, not only for our students, but making sure that staff feel supported in supporting the students as well. And then thinking about our remote options and an effective professional development for, for our staff, because it's not natural for our staff to be teaching three, four, and five-year-olds remotely. So, looking at their needs, listening to them, we have teachers that are special educators, our special education itinerant staff, general end staff, as well as our early intervention staff, all working on our work groups. And I'm really working and depending on them as teacher leaders to help be the voice and guide how we're moving forward to make sure that the teachers are really supported and have the information that they need to support our students, our early learners. And a big piece really is also supporting our families. And we are thinking that really we're going, this is going to need to take a focus with coaching our families. So, thinking about arming families with setting up routines, structuring what it looks like for learning if we're looking at remote learning, and things, and things like that. Our early intervention staff are experts at coaching, and that's the model they use as primary providers. So, our three-to-five staff are really going to be leaning on our early intervention staff to help and support and grow that model for our three, four, and five-year-olds as well.
One of the things that we heard from early childhood, that I've heard from the childhood education staff, and this is kind of similar to what I've heard from specials teachers, that they have a large number of people they might interact with and a number, a large number of environments they have to change. So, this is separate, so, setting aside the specials teachers comment, just focusing on the home visit component of early childhood education and the different settings that they have to go to, is that unique enough to say at some point that we can't control those environments in the way, with the rigor that we were talking about with Tony and Sam Ray, then do we consider that separate from the K through 12, in terms of determining whether it should be remote or in-person? Does that make sense, Dr. Lewis?
I think absolutely. Yes, and we will really lean on the guidance from KDHE as well as our local officials, but you're absolutely right, going into homes, that creates a very different dynamic of something that we don't have the control of. We don't want to have our staff at risk, and we also don't want to unknowingly, with great intentions, bring a potential risk into a family's home. So, you're right, and so, we will take our, the guidance, and then specifically for our home visitors, really look to see what that looks like and what is, what are the safe choices that we are going to be making? So, it could look a little different based on the scenarios. That you could include.
The self-assessments that will require staff and students to do, you could require staff to contact individuals in their home prior to the visit, is that a standard? That might become something standard as well, right? I mean, if we decided to go in, there would be ways to screen the people that they're interacting with.
Yeah. Before we have anyone going into homes, we would make sure that we have proper procedures in place, what, there could be screenings, that could be part of it as well, absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions for Laura? Hey, this is Patrick again, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the curriculum working groups, and similar to everything you've heard earlier, just tremendous respect for our teachers and administrators who've been working so hard. Last night, I totaled it up, we've put in 681 hours of, of teacher-staff time, that's not even counting administrator-staff time, to get to where we are today. And one of those things we really wanted to spend some time doing is understanding what we can learn from that period in March through May and continuous learning. And we really spent the first two weeks working with our teacher teams to understand what things went well, what things do we need to think about differently, and I appreciate the questions that have come up about a hybrid model. There, there really is three different models that have been recommended. One would be of, all online, another would be all brick and mortar, another one would be hybrid. But we also have to think a little bit, we, we termed it scheduled remote learning, because there may be times when we shift back to another phase, and we may have something that looked where we can't attend school for a while and then have to come back. So, we just need to make sure that as we're thinking about curriculum and instruction, that we're being highly flexible, and that was really critical for our teams to work through. The Navigating Change document first came out, the very first draft came out at the beginning of June, and it was something we shared with teachers to understand what competency-based education looked like. It was limited, but, but a lot of teachers from across the state of Kansas were able to add to that. What we got on Thursday was significantly larger, a total of over 1,000 pages, and I know my team has been poring through it. It includes not only standards based on bands of K2, 3, 5, 6, and 9 through 12, linking our standards to competencies, but it also includes assessment, it also includes instructional practice. So, I think we'll have lots of ways to help teachers think differently, not only in the fall, and how they can engage students, but also going forward for, I believe, the next five to 10 years, that this will really change and, and give us an opportunity to rethink some of our classes, how classes work together. There's a lot of demand for co-curricular integration, and this does a great job, it really makes our standards very approachable. To give you an example, if you're a science teacher and you're interested in working with a technology teacher or a math teacher, looking at the standards is all in a different format depending on your content area, and in some areas, we do not have standards. This Navigating Change document that came out Thursday is much more approachable so that if I was a technology teacher wanting to work with a science teacher, we could be looking at the same document and be able to make connections there. We continue to do website updates every two weeks as a way of communicating, the bullet points that are communicated come directly from those teacher leader teams facilitated by our curriculum and instruction team. We pace the work slowly at the beginning because we were waiting for this Navigating Change document, and now, we're really moving. The CARES Act funds, I think, is important, I, we heard a question earlier from a board member about, "How do we pay for this?" That's a great question. We're fortunate that Julie Boyle, our Executive Director, Communications, is heading up the RS Education Team for Douglas County. Erica Hill, board member, is, is our equity person on that, I believe I'm right on that, Erica. So, as we start to think about what funds we'll need to implement, are, we're working on, we're going to need to access CARES Act funds. A virtual platform has to be high rigor, and we know that what we did in continuous learning, though there were pockets of awesomeness, asking our teachers to create a highly rigorous virtual platform would be not only time-consuming but very expensive, and we are, are looking at some of the tools we use at the Lawrence Virtual School, we're familiar with that platform, we have teachers who work at the virtual school who are familiar with that platform, so that gives us a lot of options. We are planning professional development, we are grateful that you added August 11th so that we can get all that professional development. And one thing I do want to share with you is being responsive to what we heard from our teachers about needing instructional technology support. We looked at the research that's out there on the best types, best practices when it comes to professional development for instructional technology, and because teachers have different levels of knowledge on it, different needs, we've instituted what we call a peer-to-peer model. So, it provides mentoring, one-on-one coaching, we had our, we, we knew we had 34 spots budgeted, we had close to 100 applications for those spots. We were fortunate that we had enough budgeted that anyone who wasn't selected for being actually a member of the team was still able to attend the training. They started that training with ISTI, our, one of our partners, and will continue it through Avid to be able to provide one-on-one coaching and instructional technology, and not just the platforms. We like to talk about the platforms, whether it's Seesaw, or Google Classroom, or, or Loom, or all those, but also good instructional practice, matching that up to our instructional playbook, so whether we're doing it face-to-face, a hybrid or completely virtual, we're doing high-quality instruction. It's going to look better in the fall than continuous learning, or what I call crisis learning. It's going to be strong instruction with clearly articulated curriculum expectations, whether we are face-to-face, whether we are completely remote, or whether it's hybrid, a hybrid model.
I have a question about that. Happy to give the August 11th extra PD day.
That does not seem like enough to accomplish what you're talking about, for teachers to be able to pivot in the way that you're talking about, because as I'm hearing this, you're not, you're developing, if I'm an instructor, and I'll, I'll just take my own experience and say that when you have to move a class that was in-person to online and then back and forth, and you didn't know that it was going to be that way this week, because the whole building gets shut down because there's a COVID case in the, in the building, I'm having, it's, it's challenging to me to see how teachers who aren't going to know until August 1st whether or not they're teaching virtually or in-person are going to have the skill set they need to be able to really implement at the high level that you're describing.
I wish I could guarantee that. I wish I could guarantee that, you know, you're right. I don't know, I don't know how else to tell you this, but we have a limited amount of time. And I'm really confident in our team. I mean, one of the great things about having all this time with teachers is listening very carefully to what they need, and then being very purposeful about the professional development. You know, we have some things that were already scheduled for August 14th, such as restorative practices for our middle schools, and, and we don't want to lose that. That's important work. We heard some more about that tonight. So all this is about making choices with the time that we have and the resources we have so that we can really prepare our teachers. Let's not pretend that August 14th is the last PD that we're going to do with our teachers before they start with our students. We are going to be continuously providing PD this year to support our teachers. I was amazed at the, at the support that was available for our teachers in March, April, and May. Our teachers really stepped up. They stepped up for each other. Our administrators really stepped up. They supported each other. So yes, I wish we had the resources and the time to do weeks of professional development and be able to roll out a perfect system. But the reality is we have a limited number of days and a limited number of dollars, and we have to make the most of that.
The state is requiring that we start school on the same-
Exact timeline, Dr. Lewis?
They're just requiring right now the number of hours, 1,116.
So the district could take extra time before starting school to make sure that teachers had what they needed to be able to teach virtually?
Yeah, that will be negotiated, our, our bargaining-
Kelly? Yeah, thank you.
Kelly, this is Shannon. Could I make a comment here?
You actually asked that question. This was something I had written in my notes to follow up at the end of the presentations about. But I suggest that we really do give some serious consideration to altering our school calendar for this year to address some of these issues. You know, I don't think that it, it would be good for anybody to have to function in an environment where this artificially set school calendar is the reason why we can't do things well. And I, for one, would be completely open to a proposal from our teachers and our administration to say, you know, we really need more time to prepare for all of this, and let's push the school calendar to make that happen. The August 7th, I don't see August 17th as a magic number. It's, it's what we've traditionally done, but that doesn't mean we couldn't change it. That's within the board's purview and administration's purview to make that recommendation. And I think we should really consider that very seriously in this circumstance.
And we could absolutely do that.
We will, Samree is probably still watching, and she and Jill Anderson, they can go. And we all, we have a COVID Subcommittee with LEA reps tomorrow, so we can talk about some options, and then the Calendar Committee can work on it. Just recognizing, we can work through it and have an option at the next board meeting, if that's something that you recommend. We can definitely do that between now and the next board meeting.
I really appreciate that you want to talk to the LEA. I think it's important to explore that.
So we, we meet either tomor-, I think tomorrow.
Okay.
We do meet tomorrow, so we'll add that to the agenda.
Thank you. So with-
I'm not saying it's a necessity, or that it's something that I expect to see, but I just, I want you all to know that I, speaking for myself, I really think that we have to treat all of these things as things that we should look at critically and reconsider this year. All of it, calendar, schedule, you know, in order to make this work in a way that meets our educational mission but also keeps our staff and our students safe. I don't, I don't think any of those decisions or, or things should be off the table for consideration.
And I want to kind of add to that. With that, what would that look like, you know, like with-
Situations, if we're, if we have to go to that virtual, I, I know people are not going to like to hear this, but like if we either had to shorten holiday time if we're virtually in the, in our, you know, in our homes, or half-day Saturday school to do the required hours as proposed? Like what would that look like from a- That's what the Calendar Committee can look at. One of the things that, so for example, last year when we had to delay Lawrence High and we extended the day, and we just have to make sure that we can capture the 1,116 minutes. And that may be shortened in holidays or going past Memorial Day. Like if you add a week on the front, it may just be adding a week on the back or chopping up. So that's what the Calendar Committee will look at, and they can look at, you know, if we just said no one is going to start before August 27th, I don't know if that's Monday, I'm making it up, or Labor Day. You just have to replace those days to capture the minutes, but we can definitely engage with LEA, maybe do a couple of options to have some teacher feedback on, and then bring it back here with whatever the Calendar Committee proposed, but we can definitely look at it.
Great to hear that, that's an option. You see sort of our next steps there on the slide. Right now, for the next two weeks, our teams are really working on identifying instructional resources. So you heard a little bit of Samree talking about shared resources. What adjustments do we need to make if students are not sharing resources? We may need to purchase different resources. We need to think differently about that. Our curriculum and instruction working groups will be creating lesson exemplars that align to the priority standards that they've identified. Your timing that you discussed may be very helpful. The CARES Act will be approved by the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners on August 12. So we won't know until that day what dollars are going to be made available to us in that plan. That's a really quick timeline to put together a budget, and budget that's going to have competing values in it, and then turn around and provide professional development as we prepare for school, whether that's remote, hybrid, or, or face-to-face. And then, you know, that professional development time, August 3rd would be the first time we'd have new teachers. And because of the high school schedule, we extend all the way till the 19th. So that does give you a little bit of an idea of our next steps in curriculum groups. I'm happy to take any other questions if you have them.
Shannon?
I have some thoughts to share when we're all, all the way finished, but I, I just have more to the report.
I'm going to turn it over to Lindsey Buck, our President of Lawrence Education Association. Lindsey?
Thank you, Patrick. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lindsey Buck, pronouns are she/her, and I'm the interim president of the Lawrence Education Association. I would like to start by saying that the LEA Executive, Executive Board's primary concern is for the safety of our educators and their students. As an outgrowth of that concern, we've been very busy this summer. LEA has been involved with the Together Again Fall Planning Task Force at a variety of levels. Our lead negotiators, Megan Upperson and Jeff Plinsky, and I as president have been involved in weekly COVID Subcommittee meetings to discuss issues that impact the master agreement, as well as to call attention to other concerns of members. There are LEA members involved in nearly every committee that was mentioned in this presentation tonight. Very recently, I was added to the weekly meetings of the district administrative staff. And I also want to note that we had two LEA members involved in developing the state guidelines with the Navigating Change Task Force. Next, I would like to share with the board some information from the National Education Association and the Kansas NEA regarding the reopening of schools in the fall. NEA's position is that health and safety must be considered first. The absolute preconditions to reopening are: a scientific consensus that the virus has been sufficiently contained and that the local health infrastructure can effectively address current and future outbreaks; and a plan to continue to contain the virus that includes robust COVID-19 testing, effective contact tracing, and case isolation within the school community and in coordination with the broader community and state efforts. KNEA recently released a four-point statement regarding the reopening of schools. They've stated, "wear a face covering, small class sizes and safe distance, trust health experts, and give stakeholders a voice and listen." The CDC offers the following guiding principles to keep in mind: The more people a student or staff member interacts with, and the longer that interaction, the higher the risk of COVID-19 spread. The risk of COVID-19 spread increases in school settings as follows. Lowest risk includes students and teachers engaging in virtual-only classes, activities, and events. More risk would be small in-person classes, activities, and events. Groups of students stay together with the same teacher throughout and across school days, and groups do not mix. Students remain at least six feet apart and do not share objects. Some examples could be a hybrid virtual and in-person class structures, or staggered and/or rotating scheduling to accommodate smaller class sizes. The highest risk they identify is full-sized in-person classes, activities, and events. Students are not spaced apart, share classroom materials or supplies, and mix between classes and activities. The LEA Executive Board believes that if Kansas schools do not receive the appropriate, appropriate resources to safely open schools by thoroughly following the CDC guidelines, they should not be reopening. Additionally, it is concerning to members that educators were not immediately considered in the surveys that were sent out. Parents and community members are certainly key stakeholders, but so are your educators. And while a survey was eventually sent out to certified and classified staff, they are not due until July 17th, giving many educators the impression that their input is not actually being considered or prioritized for drafting of the district plan. Furthermore, we heard back from many members who stated they did not feel they could be honest about their level of comfort to return to the brick-and-mortar setting, and some have since changed their stance on their level of comfort as cases continue to rise in the state of Kansas and specifically Douglas County. To that end, LEA leadership plans to conduct a survey in an effort to gauge where our members are in terms of their level of comfort and confidence for returning in the fall to brick-and-mortar setting. We're also calling on the district to re-survey all key stakeholders as opinion seems to be changing with the uptick in cases locally. I want to say that I appreciate Dr. Stubblefield's comment on that earlier, that that sounds like it is in the plan. Let me say this and be very clear, the LEA Executive Board's primary concern is for the safety of our educators and their students. We expect the district to meet the CDC guidelines at a minimum prior to asking anyone to enter the brick-and-mortar school. I think, yeah, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsey. This is Cheryl. I just, I just want to thank Lindsey for that-
Report, because I've shared this before, but the COVID has shined, it's shined a light on the inequities and the racial disparities that this is having on us. And a lot of people don't, it's not culturally competent to say, okay, you might, you might have been exposed to COVID, so go to your extra bedroom, here's your extra bathroom. A lot of our families don't have that. Some of our families are doubled up. So I do want to thank you for that.
And Lindsey, you, you will report out the results of the survey too, so that we have that information as a board, correct?
Definitely. Thank you, for sure.
And Lindsey, will you send it to all staff which is delegating?
I, I'll discuss that with the exec board. Earlier, we mentioned members, but we can also discuss that tomorrow during the COVID Subcommittee meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So the next step that we have is to actually share the preliminary survey results. And before, and they're, just at a high level, I'm not going to spend a lot of time because it does not close until July 17th. And part of that was, as things change, people, responses may change. And we have shared with Lindsey and others in LEA, or when they've contacted us saying they want to change their response, they just need to let Zach know, but I respect that some may not be comfortable and would gladly help, I mean, that'll be another point of data. But based off this survey, and this is the certified information, and I'll say the classified information is actually not in here because only a third of the classified have actually responded. So about 367, and we have about 900, but we know there's a gap there with communication and access to devices. So we'll have that, hopefully we can get more classified responses by the time we share it again. But you can see that well over 60% are either concerned or very concerned. And moving on to the next slide, the preliminary results, and this was as of probably this morning, is that correct, Zach? Yeah, and so it could have changed since then. The preference at the elementary level at that time, and we know people's opinion may have changed, and it would change. Their preference is face-to-face learning, but we also know that they want to prioritize safety with the face-to-face learning. And that's about 65% with that one. And when we asked the secondary, the same, the preference there was either faced, was a blended model where you have some remote, some online, and then the second was face-to-face. And again, I think that was varying by subject areas, and with the changing information, it may change as well. But at this point in time, there, that's where it is. And then on the next slide, we asked, as you begin to think about returning to school, what are the pressing concerns that you have? And they were able to select up to three, and that's how they fell out.
Health and safety.
Health and safety was the top concern, and then teacher health and safety, and then student health and safety. And I think they're pretty close there. So that's that information. And then the next question was around knowing what you know now, what kind of professional learning opportunity is helpful? And that was us gauging what their preference is around, or most important for professional learning. And it was how to best engage students through distance learning, which we've talked about some of that, and then also talked about how we may extend that time here tonight. And then the final slide just shows the student breakout. Now, this number, and it may change based off of the number of families that have responded so far. And I think Shannon and others are absolutely accurate on, some people haven't responded because they're waiting on more information. So maybe after tonight, or maybe not, it may be a little more confusing. But that's how the numbers break down per school of people who want 100% remote learning. And what that tells of is that if that trend continues, we are planning for a larger quantity, and that has to look different if we're going to implement the guidelines from the CDC and the social distancing aspect. But that's just the preliminary results. We'll continue to monitor it. Staff, students, I mean, staff, families, and others have the right, as they get more data, to change their mind. And at August, by August 1st, we're just hoping that there'll be enough information out there that they can make a more informed decision, and we can continue to plan for what it looks like and work with the Health Department to make sure that safety, the health and safety of our students are prioritized. And the last slide that we have, because it has been a long time, is what will happen next. Patrick, are you going to take this, or do you-
I can walk through this.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, most of this we've talked about already, but this week, the Kansas Board of Education finalizes navigating change guidance. There is a presentation by the Governor and KDHE and KSDE on Wednesday, I believe. On July 17th, that's when the survey closes for remote learning options in classified and certified staff. But we already mentioned if people'd like to change their answers by August 1st, that's there. We meet, we've mentioned July 23rd with Lawrence Douglas County Public Health to finalize some health and safety guidance. And we plan to have another presentation to you in two weeks. And I mentioned the Douglas County Care Act Recovery Plan on August 12th. That concludes our presentation, and I think you might have some questions or comments.
Thank you. That is a tremendous amount of work.
Questions, but are there questions from board members? Or takeaways? Shannon?
I do, I was, I wanted to give other people a chance to go first, so.
I have a technical question.
But the, the teachers that report to you that they are not comfortable teaching in the classroom, I understand there's an HR- I understand there's an HR process for that. And then I've heard that teachers are uncomfortable with that process and are unsure about job security as that process is. And that's the perception they're sharing. I'm sure you've heard that as well. Can you talk a little bit about if a teacher, maybe they don't have a protected status, but they live with someone who does, you know, they have health reasons, there's someone in their home that might be impacted by exposure, or whatever it might be. How soon do they have to tell you they want to teach in person, or they don't want to teach in person? What's the, what is the staff choice?
So right now, and Dave may, or Samree may be on here, you can chime in. Right now, those, regardless of what the situation may be, there are ADA guidelines and those kinds of things. HR is primarily asking, I think, like, four questions? And then just telling them the next step. But their job status and those things, I think where some of the disconnect may be is that there's no definite answer. They're gathering information and then telling them what additional information that they need. But they're not, when individuals are coming in, they're not saying, "Okay, you're approved." Because there's a whole process outside of COVID, like any time that we have those kinds of things. And Dave, if I'm saying the wrong thing, you can chime in, that we have to follow. The other component is, we needed to know the data so that we know there will be, absolutely be individuals, I don't care what phase or had social distancing, they will not be able to teach in a brick-and-mortar setting. So we need to evaluate, what does that mean? Like, we have a virtual school. Does that then mean that they're teaching in our virtual school? Does it mean they're 100% remote? But those, all of those things are not flushed out. And I think, unfortunately, either, we just don't know right now. But our goal would be to tell them what it will look like or what their job responsibilities will look like once we have a better idea of what we're going to look like.
So in the staffing ratio, I mean, in terms of the budget to, if you had a, like this, you know, this number of 68% of teachers saying that they're concerned about their safety coming to school. So if we even had a percentage of those students, teachers say, "I don't want to be in the building," we don't have the backup teachers to come in and cover a right to have a virtual option and an in-person option and to be able to have the ratios correct?
So it goes back to, so let's say, in a perfect world, if it was 68% of the teachers and 68% of our students said they wanted 100% remote, we can marry it. Right now, that's not the case. So then we would have to look at, so like, our virtual numbers, they may need to hire a teacher or two. So we're trying to balance all of that. And then if for, so we're really honestly still gathering the information. And if they, and we just haven't navigated through that because there's a cost to that. If, let's say, we're in Phase 4, and like, all things are great, and those 68 still are not concerned. So if the board is going to allocate money, if they have, like, those are the kinds of things that we have to gather that information. But if we're all remote, then it's taken care of. So we don't know where we are, and I think that's the challenge. And we don't know, but the goal is by August 1st, if it works out.
Yes. Based on the presentation tonight, we would hopefully know something around August 1st in terms of what we're going to be able to do. The challenge right now is, we're not giving anybody answers on anything because we don't have the answers to all their questions. So we're gathering information in terms of their concern. And the basis of that concern, whether it's a personal health issue or a family health issue. And then, once we have all of that information, all the medical information that we do gather, that we would need in an ADA situation, is confidential, so that's not going to be shared with anybody. But we are maintaining a list of who wants to work remotely, or there are other folks that are calling and saying, "I don't need to work remotely, but would I be able to have this type of personal protective equipment in a brick-and-mortar environment? Are kids going to be required to wear masks?", those types of questions. So we're gathering that information. Then we will work with the rest of the team to figure out, "Okay, how does all that mesh together?"
Okay.
So once you know how many kids are remote, what your teaching needs are for that remote setting, then you begin to layer in what resources you have for that. So there are just a lot of unknowns at this point. So we don't give people answers. We're just asking questions right now.
Thank you. Shannon?
Okay. I have lots of thoughts. And I just wanted to share some of these thoughts because I don't know when we will have another opportunity to have a conversation like this before plans are set. So just since last Friday, we've had 43 new cases in Douglas County. And, you know, we're not testing at the same pace over the weekend as during the week, so I think that that's probably low. Seen anecdotal reports of local businesses choosing to close their doors again because of the growing community spread in Lawrence. Just during this meeting tonight, I got two news notifications. One for a new article in the Topeka Capital Journal that says that, according to a number of experts in public health, Kansas is now experiencing uncontrolled spread of COVID in our state. I got another news alert that said, about a new research study that says that the dangers to young adults of contracting COVID are severe, partly because, especially for those young adults who are smokers, which caused me to think about, you know, the discussion we've had over the last year about how we think that upwards of 3/4 of our high school students potentially vape, and that probably puts them at high risk. Lindsey, in her comments tonight, talked about the data that's out there about how it's really about the number of contacts that you have with people and the length of exposure that you have to the virus that can really have an impact on your personal risk of contracting COVID. And I take all of that together, and I really, I have a lot of concerns for the safety of our staff going into this, as well as the safety of our students, my own children included in that. I was one of the parents, I have not answered that survey that's open until July 17th, because I really don't know how I feel about it at this moment in time, given all of the information and data that's out there. And I really don't know if I can give you a good answer before July 17th. So if I'm in that position, I imagine that I'm not alone. I'm encouraged by what I heard tonight, that we still have the, you know, the option of starting completely remotely or potentially with some sort of hybrid model on the table. I just, I think, given the data that we're seeing about the increasing community spread, it's, I know we have to plan for back in the buildings at some point, but I really, really personally believe that we have to be planning, that that is not our first choice come August 17th, or September 1st, or whenever it is that we actually get to start school this fall. It's, it was just, there's too much data out there showing that this is far more dangerous than a typical health situation. And I'm really struggling with how we shift our thinking to really accept that and work with that fact. Kelly, I'm glad that you asked the question about staffing and the data that HR is gathering. I too have had lots and lots of feedback from staff about that process. I'd really like to encourage us to think about, to think about this differently. I just don't think that we can apply the same human resources models to this particular situation that we typically use. And I would hope that we would consider allowing staff more choice in their decision about whether they come back to the buildings or not. From a personal safety standpoint, I don't think that we should be asking them to justify, I don't think we should be saying, "You have to have a note from your doctor in order to be able to choose to teach remotely this year." And I know that that's a difficult thing to ask, given that we have limited resources. And we are going to have a need for staff in certain places. But I think to respect our teaching staff's feelings and the real risk that they perceive from what they're being asked to do potentially, that we have to give them more choice in this circumstance than we normally would. I had a lot of notes. I wanted to make sure. One thing that I think is going to be part of the draft guidance that's going before the state board this week has to do with recommendations about masks for students. I'm glad to hear that our district is planning to require them for all students. I think that's incredibly important. I don't know that the state board's plan is going to make that same recommendation, and I hope that we stay strong in our insistence that that is a part of our learning plan. If we are going to have students in the buildings, students and staff need to be masked. The airborne transmission data is ever-increasing and really concerning. And then I guess, finally, I just want to say that in our communications with our staff and with our community, I hope that we really start setting a greater expectation that school is going to be different this fall, whether it's virtual, whether it's a hybrid learning model, whether it's in the building. I don't, it's not comforting to me to see communication that says that we're going to have school look as close to possible as it used to when we come back to the buildings, because then I don't think we're really acknowledging the real dangers and the real challenges that the situation we are in present. And so I hope that we will shift our communications to really reflect setting an expectation that it's going to be very different. And we have to set a lot of our expectations aside in order to make this successful and safe for students and for our staff as well. So I guess the final thing I wanted to say, actually doesn't have to do with with our learning plans as much as it does with our graduation plans this weekend. And I probably should have brought this up during our board commentary, but it really, I guess, fits more appropriately here. I personally have substantial concerns about us going forward with our graduations as planned this weekend. And I just wanted to share with my fellow board members and staff and the community that I have those concerns. I am very undecided as to whether I will attend graduation this weekend. And I tell you that that statement causes me a lot of difficulty and emotion because I feel it's very important to honor the work that our staff and our students have put in to reach that milestone. I've not missed a graduation in our district in the entire time I've been on the board. It's something that I see is a great honor to participate in that process with our students and part of my duties as a board member. But given the data that we have so far about the increasing growth in community spread, I have serious misgivings about being there and participating in that process. So I think my decision is really going to depend a lot on what the data looks like over the next few days. I wanted to share that with board members because I felt like you should know, and that our administration should know, that I have those concerns. It's part of the reason why I'm not there this evening in person as well. And anyway, it's not an easy thing for me to say, and I'm sorry that I have to say it, but it's, there's a lot of things that go into that consideration that caused me to reach that conclusion. So thank you for letting me share that. I appreciate it.
Shannon, can I have a ask of them? Because it'll really dictate what we plan.
And I don't know if the rest of the board, and Dr. Lewis, if I'm on the line, tell me to be quiet. If we prioritize the teachers who remote learning, that drives the schedule. If we don't ask the question, and if that's the direction that we need to go, we can definitely do that, knowing that that will dictate what school looks like. And I don't have an opinion on it. It'll just provide clarity on what we need to do in planning because then, in some cases, it will not matter what scenario we're in. If we prioritize what information we're getting from staff, we know that we're just planning for remote learning. Not making an opinion on it, but if that's what we need to put our energies into, and you don't have to maybe answer tonight, maybe you can email Dr. Lewis and think about it, then we can.
No, I'm happy to, I mean, I'm sharing my personal opinions. You know, of course, Dr. Stubblefield, and I'm just one person on the board, and I'm not an administrator. I just, I'm reacting to the, to the, to the great number of communications that I've had from staff about what we've announced up to this point about our plans. Maybe they will feel differently after watching the meeting tonight and hearing more details about what we're talking about, particularly for those people who aren't involved in the committees, who've been talking about this and are really immersed in the details, which I was remiss in not saying thank you to all of them for the time that you've put into the, over the last months. But, you know, there was one sentence in one of the emails that was read during board commentary tonight that just really struck me. And I actually wrote it down even before it was read during the board commentary, which was, "I should not have to prove my loyalty to my students and public education by risking my life and that of my family." And I think that that's a sentiment that we have to take very seriously. Because if you are asking staff to come back into the buildings, and you have staff that feel that way, you know, I have to wonder how effective they're going to be in doing, you know, giving their 110% to students and to our mission, when they feel that, when they feel that their life is in danger because of what we are asking them to do. So I don't know the right answer to your question. Because I think you're right.
If that's, I mean, collectively.
And we can't replace those people easily, but I just, I think we have to really consider that emotion that our teachers are feeling as we, in whatever direction we choose to go from this point forward.
So Shannon, I'm going to pause for a minute. So we also have to.
We can react to the emails that we've been getting from people who have the highest level of anxiety. We don't have the data that we need right now to make that kind of a direction. And that's why I'm quite pleased to hear that the LEA is asking teachers to respond. I know there were some issues with the survey we had because it had identifying information. They had to say who they were and where, what school they were at. And I know that had administrative purposes, but it did interfere with responses. We heard that over and over and over again from teachers in the last couple of days. So I do think we have to have additional information. And I do trust, Anna, that you'll work with the LEA to get that.
Yeah. And I just want to say, I mean, absolutely, as administrators, we did need to have that. I know we've worked to create and establish trust, and there are still people or individuals who feel like they can't be honest. But in these kinds of situations, we, there's no retribution or no backlash. But we just have to be mindful about that. If that's the direction we're going, that is a clear-cut direction. And we can communicate to families, and we can communicate to our staff. And we can start to, as a community, to plan how to support those families that don't have that option. I mean, when we look at our data, and I, you know, I'm a parent and facing the same situations. But when we look at our data, we know exactly who didn't engage. And we know it's a variety of reasons. And there's this assumption that it was only our poor children, our children, that didn't have connectivity. There were absolutely families who are, have all the resources in the world that could not do it. So if we're going to do that as a community in Lawrence, we need to think about how we're going to help those families that they don't have the capacity to do it. And absolutely not wanting anybody to risk their lives. But if that's how we're going to prioritize, it definitely, and not that there's anything wrong with it, that's just not the way we have been approaching it.
When you say this is not the way that we've been approaching it, you mean to say?
But to say, and I, you know, I heard the comment, and it's getting late, so I'm going to sit down. The comment that Lindsey made, that we surveyed families before we surveyed teachers because we needed to know the data around the families and then the teachers. It wasn't that we were prioritizing families over teachers. We were looking at our students, our end user, our customers. So what is it that we need to have in place in approaching it from a student-centered approach? Not any disrespect. I respect all of our teachers. I respect what they're saying. But it wasn't in disrespect to them. But if we're going to pivot, then we've done it backward, then we're. But if we're going to pivot, and we've done it backward, then we, it would just have been a different way to approach it. Not that either is one better than the other, but all of our decisions typically have been student-centered decisions um in making sure that we support our staff and provide them the support that they need to encounter that. And this is very different, because this is about life and death and health and those kind of things. So it's new to us all, and we can definitely shift and pivot um if we're going to do that. But I think the sooner, if we're going to do it, then I'm really sitting down. We just need to start planning now, so that we can make sure that our students that don't have the structure, the support, or the parents that don't have the choice have things in place to make sure that those students are engaged.
So the, and, and so the point you're really, just to, to succinctly say it, so we understand what you're, you're asking. So there, there, what, we've talked a little bit about the anxiety around going back and the, the issues related to safety um in COVID. But there, there is a um, a consideration around not the equity of what the um delivery of an online um education product looks like, depending on um different identities you might hold or whatever your family's individual situation is. We also heard from families that um uh teaching, you know, with their child learning from home was a profound challenge for them and, and took a lot of their time and energy. So is that what you're asking? If, if we want to go virtually, that we say so, is that correct?
If that is, you know, recognizing that if the, the individuals, and I don't know who contacted HR and what, because that's all confidential. But if whomever contacted HR, for whatever reason, if we're saying, yes, you're going to be able to teach remotely, that has a huge implication systemically on what our options are. And if it's enough where we just have to say, it doesn't matter what stage we're in, we have enough employees that want to teach remotely, and we're going, and that's what our focus is going to be. Because what I don't want to happen is for us to do all this planning, and we come back, and then it's like you all saying, you, hearing from the teachers and administrator, administration is not listening. Because we all listen, and we can make whatever work, but we don't want it to be like that. I mean, I think just to build on the trusting relationship, um, and I get it that they didn't want to put it in a survey, but I hope that eventually we get to the point where we can be honest and transparent and not have the perception that we have a, a hidden agenda or that kind of thing. And I don't think it's that, but it's about, you know, the thinking, I'm going to not, they may not think that I'm committed to teaching because I just don't feel comfortable in the anxiety around it. I'm not going to be effective, and why isn't that just enough information for me to be able to teach remotely?
So I certainly cannot speak to the um thought process behind what might, um, I don't think that teachers have frequently gotten the respect that they should from our communities and not from you, Dr. Stubblefield, at all. You've been um a good partner to teachers. And I think Dr. Lewis has been a good partner to teachers. I think for them, and if you have a career that's twenty years long and you had to look back over those twenty years, you might not reflect that it's been a profession that's that people have celebrated and given you everything you needed, and there wasn't any reason to be anxious at all. Like maybe if you've been around long enough, you know, there's a reason to take, have pause. Um, so I, to your point about how you collect the data and the logistics of that and what the optics look like as opposed to the intention, there, in this point where we have to be highly flexible, um, there are going to be missteps. Um, and I know in my own job, um, I have had a few of my own uh where my intention was not entirely interpreted the way that I meant. So I, I think that we know now that that's how teachers are interpreting, or some are, then we can respond. And some of the things that you have put forward allow for that type of response in terms of the communication that will be coming up moving forward. Um, but to the question to the board about uh immediate decisions, if we have a, a general sense about of an opinion, if you do about a fully online, hybrid or in-person option, if you could just speak to that. Um, do you have, Paula, do you have a? I'll just, I'm going to ask everybody real quick.
I, I can go.
Oh, who else wants to go?
I'll say that um for me personally, um, I think, I know it's all about data and trying to get data and, and trying to see and, and um, you know, Shannon, Shannon made a lot of good points, and I love Shannon, and Shannon's one of my favorite people. Um, but I think, I, I think at this point tonight, I don't know that we have enough data. I think, I think specifically, we need to hear on Wednesday what the governor has to say, and we need to see that information in its finalized form, I think, before we can give that specific of a directive, personally.
Okay, I see nodding heads.
I mean, I, I know um, I would be honest, that was one of my frustrations with, with some of the, the, the things that have been happening around me, because we don't know what Wednesday's finalized plan is going to look like. And, and you know, it's really hard as an educator myself, and you know, to kind of um, you know, accept that because we like to plan. Like, I've had to kind of almost numb myself to the situation of like planning, because I don't want to plan something and it go, you know, I have to dramatically change it. But to speak to other traditional hybrid um strictly online, I would say, just in my experience with, even though it was like a rush experience um after spring break and, and um, and everything, that I would, I would prefer there would be some form of hybrid. Like I have us, two of my students, one is a senior, straight A, you know, didn't really have to worry, still attended some of those classes because, you know, they wanted that knowledge. Then I have another kiddo that I just knew would excel in the online, because that's what they like to do, be online. And it was a struggle, and it got to the point where I'm like, okay, just do what you need to do to pass this class, to get a better grade in this class, you know? And it was a struggle. And then also um as a second grade teacher, I had four, on average, four of my students come online, you know, live and, or even, you know, even to the point, looking at the work, you know, it was just a matter of, I'm going to tat, I'm going to do a circle and then submit it, because, you know, it shows that I was here. I don't know that, I'm not saying that was the mindset, but I know it was a struggle. I've heard on recordings when they had to respond to a prompt or something. I can hear their, their, their sis- siblings for, you know, that are also in high school that had to do their work, helping them out. I can hear one of my students who's very quiet, shy, very loving, crying, saying, "I don't know what to do, this is still, I, I still don't understand," or like, "I'm bored," or this or that, you know? So hearing that, or "I'm hungry," you know? And I have to go and go online and, you know, email the council and say, "Hey, what can you do for, for this student?" So, you know, um, that kind of, you know, um contributes to what Dr. Stubblefield was saying, that, you know, it's not just, it's not really just your um students who are at an economic disadvantage that can't, you know, do it like, as scared as I am for my, for my um, or nervous as I am for my student to go back to school, who has asthma, who, you know, who has respiratory things, I know that also if there's not some type of back and forth, that, you know, they're not going to do very well. And, and he's a black male, you know? I want him to graduate and, you know, be able to do those things. Um, and, you know, have that understanding, like that given trait, like there's some things that he loves to do that's going to probably help him with a career, but he also has to graduate, you know? Um, so, you know, I go back and forth with that. I, I, I definitely understand the sentiments behind the fear. Um, but, you know, we have to do something. If we're all students and, you know, we have to have at least those options.
Yeah, okay, this is Carol. And I, I agree that we should look at hybrid or virtual, because these, the COVID numbers are not coming down. We need to do our best as leaders to flatten the curve. But um, and it's like Shannon said, that our kids are going to suffer from collateral damage. If our teachers or the educators' hearts are not in it, our kids are going to pay the price, they're going to feel that. And I, I really, I just, I'm uncomfortable with you, or I don't, I just, I don't want to use our youth as a litmus test for COVID. It's, it's, we just need to flatten the curve, and we can do it here.
Melissa, I appreciate you sharing and being open about your experience as a mother and a, and a educator. Um, so I have a granddaughter who's coming into Pickney, I believe, this year. She came in as a kindergarten into Pecos Schools, and now she's moving here into Lawrence. And the way she learns is very in-person and hands-on type. So it, you know, I was kind of hesitant on saying it, but I do think a hybrid model would be something I would like to see. Um, and then also, I respect that teachers, I'm sorry, Shannon, I'm trying to talk close to the microphone. I see you getting really close to the screen. Um, so I, you know, I, I do, would like to see some type of hybrid model, and I do respect that teachers should have some, some kind of um more say in whether they want to tru- uh teach online. So I don't know what that balance would look like, Anna and Dr. Lewis. So maybe, maybe on the next meeting that we'd be able to hear more about that.
Thank you.
I'd like to first of all say um thank you to the district for doing such hard work. I mean, I can't imagine what you've been going through, so thank you for that. Um, and I would agree with what um, what G R was saying, that we need to um continue the work, but also we'll have guidance on the sixteenth, so that will help guide our, our steps going forward. And also, um, we have to have a trustworthy process. We know we're going to have missteps along the way. Um, this is a very fluid, very evolving um situation that we're all in. And so just having a trustworthy process will help hopefully mitigate some of those ill feelings, knowing that the, you know, assuming positive intent will help along the way too. Um, and um, I'm on the fence, I'm going to be honest. I'm on the fence. I know the importance of protecting our physical health, but the mental health of um being socially and physically distant from people. I don't want to go into that, but that, we can't not pay attention to that as well.
Okay.
I could just make some final comments, and then we'll, we'll get out of here. Again, I just want to echo, echo my sentiments to not only our staff here, but our over two hundred uh staff that have been involved in development of this plan. And Patrick stated that six hundred and eighty hours of, of time, that's a tremendous amount of time, and there are still some, some questions that, that we need answers to. I think we can approach this from, and we should approach this from a standpoint of a departure from the past, of the one-size-fits-all. I think this is an opportunity for us to really do something great for, for all families and understanding that every single family dynamic is different. And I want to make sure I'm, I be the voice for those individuals, not saying that we are, we're, you are not. I want to make sure we, that we're the voice of those individuals where school is the safest place uh for them. Making sure that we, they're safe while they're there, you know? Um, and so just looking at um ways that we make sure that we are meeting the needs of our students. I was looking at an EAB study, and it talked about just the um, the, the last ten, twelve weeks of learning loss that we can expect pretty much a, think of thirty-four percent decline in, 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 in reading and RIT scores. NWA, that's about fourteen months of lost learning. You couple that with summer learning loss, and those gaps will continue to, to widen. As a matter of fact, the same study talked about twenty-plus percent um increase in the, in the size of the gap. And so I think about those students, uh, and I'm told, and, and please understand me, hear me correctly, I'm not discounting uh our teachers' fears. I, I get it, I, and I do, I do understand that. Um, speaking personally, my two need to be in school. I can't be the at-home teacher, didn't do a good job of that. But just knowing that and understanding that every single family is, dynamic is different, so how can we make sure that each family is able to select the best option for them while keeping all of our students and staff safe? I think that's where we need to kind of focus our attention, and that's what we've been doing in terms of getting some of this data, so we can get to that point.
That's really helpful, thank you, Dr. Lewis, and thank you, Dr. Stubblefield, and Patrick, and Samari, and um, who am I missing? Uh, everyone that was here tonight and presented, um, Lindsay for coming. It's, I, I agree with Erica, it's a tremendous amount of work, and I appreciate how inclusive you were in the process about involving so many different layers of people that can have influence, influence and have voice, so I appreciate that. So um, there are no announcements, right? And then I need a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, and then I just do this, and we're done, and everybody's already leaving?